Having a discussion. Oh, it's item number seven, appoint official voting representative for the leading cities and towns annual meeting. Um, so I mean, we can, I suppose we could still like briefly talk about that if you want when we get there, but otherwise I think that's kind of a non, non item.
Um. Oh, hi.
Take it off.
Okay. Uh, Joan, what's up?
I got a last just today delivered to me another liquor license application, a second class application for the Savoy Theater. So if we can toss that in with the other one on the consent agenda, that would be awesome.
Okay.
And they'll be at the police station tomorrow?
Absolutely, along with all the warrants.
All the warrants, yeah, great.
Okay, so any other changes to the consent or not to the consent, to the agenda in general? Okay, great. So without objection, we'll consider the agenda approved. Uh, so on to general business and appearances, this is an opportunity for any member of the public to address the council about any topic that is otherwise not on our agenda. And uh, yeah, if you would say your name and where you live and try to keep your comments to about two minutes, that would be excellent. And uh, yeah, so would anybody like to address the council?
So you can either turn your camera on and give a little wave, or you can use the hand emoji. So we know that you would like to speak.
Uh, Steven Whitaker here.
Yeah, go ahead, Steven.
Uh, I am uh, taken aback that after all that work two weeks ago, uh, the uh, issue of the public restrooms didn't even make it onto the agenda for discussion. I sensed that the council got it some sense that there's an emergency here. There's a pandemic, there's nowhere for people to wash their hands. You know, people are crapping in the streets and, and you just like treated it as if it's, you know, someday we'll think about it, we'll talk about it, and it's outrageous. And it's a crisis. I've escalated to the health commissioner already. The city council needs to take this seriously instead of spending a quarter million dollar on fluffy sides for businesses that aren't here anymore.
Okay, thank you, Steven. Um. Just thinking about that, was there any, because we did talk about short term things, when um, where are we going? I, I know we were going to revisit that with potentially as a budget item. Um, where we, what are your thoughts on addressing that any sooner?
Cameron?
Yeah, go ahead, Karen.
I have pulled together um, some internal folks and we are working on a proposal for y'all of a couple of different options that we've been investigating. They might not all be budgetarily feasible right now, but we're looking at both short term and long term options for you to consider. We'll have that by your next meeting.
Great, thank you for that update. Oh, anybody else? Okie dokie. Alright, and Cameron doesn't see anyone, so alright, so on to the consent agenda, so um, is and we're understanding that this includes uh, the liquor license for the Savoy Theater. Um, any other motion regarding consent agenda? Go ahead, Jack?
I move the consent agenda as amended uh, this tonight.
Okay, uh, motion in a second, any further discussion?
I have one quick question. Um, on the coming street where it's changing to gravel, just as a clarification, that until the water main is replaced and then it would be repaved, so it's a temporary situation, is that correct?
That's correct, it'll be newly paved and improved.
Okay. That's all I have.
Any other um, thoughts on or discussion about the consent agenda? Okay, so there's a motion in a second, all in favor, please say aye.
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 And opposed, oh, and opposed. Um. Alright, so the consent agenda passes and we are on to uh, the homelessness task force appointments. And I think we had one vacancy and uh, one applicant, if I'm not mistaken. Um, and I don't see Diane necessarily on right now. Um, so. Oh, we do, so yeah, what, what's your pleasure, council? Uh, Jack?
I move we go into executive session to discuss the appointment of a public official.
Second. Okay, there's a motion in a second, um, any further discussion? Okay, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Alright.
And opposed. Okay, so we are gonna um, hop off this call, though the line will still remain open. And we will return to this same line uh, in, in, in a bit. Alright, we'll see you soon. Ahah. I think we have a Donna.
And we're ready.
Alright. Okay, so Donna, we just came out of executive session, but we have not yet taken a vote yet, so just FYI. Um, alright, is there a motion? Yes, Dan?
So uh, I move that we appoint Diane Matthews to the homelessness task force to the vacant position for which she is applied.
I'll second it.
Okay, um, good, a motion in a second, um, any further discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
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 And opposed. Okay, alright, so um, thank you to Diane for stepping up to serve on this committee. Um, alright, so we are um, I guess we're skipping item seven, unless you want to say anything about that, Donna?
No.
Okay.
I mean, other than uh, the actual, it was about the town fair and being the delegate.
Okay.
And because it was on Zoom this year, the Vermont League of City and Towns divided up the business portion, which was this week, today, and the fair, which is next week. And I registered for one, but I had some problems getting authorization to vote in today's meeting, so I ended up not being omitted. So next year, we'll plan ahead.
Hopefully next year be back in person.
Who knows? Who knows?
Not hopefully.
Indeed.
But people should uh,
Okay, so.
It is free and people should consider zooming in for a few sessions next week. That's all, thank you.
Alright, so uh, the next item is a discussion about the Central Mont Public Safety Authority and um, the potential appointments to that, but we don't um, have any appointments to make this evening. Um, but I think we're just talking about it generally. Um, so for this, I, I'm turning it over either to Bill or to Donna, I'm not sure who.
I would, so I could just quickly say that we, we do have two vacant positions uh, on the committee. And we've advertised for them a new number of times, uh, both Donna is, is one of our reps and Kim Cheney is our elected rep and the current chair have spoken to me about this and had asked that this be on the council agenda to discuss the situation. Maybe the CVPSA in general, so I'll turn it over to either one of them.
Just a correction there, Bill, I'm actually not an appointed from the city council any longer. I got on the ballot in March, so I'm an at large.
Yes, correct, I'm sorry about that.
Yeah, that's alright, and part of my doing that is I was hoping to free up spaces because I do think that particularly as we're getting so much into equipment and expertise of public safety staff, I feel is essential to be on the board. Other regional public safety groups have their chiefs on their board, I mean, only their chiefs actually. So I just felt that it was a good time to do that, we're looking at this needs assessment, it's going to be coming back. A lot of technical aspects that we all can, on the board can learn from, but it's really better if you have some, I think, base expertise there. And commitment, and the one thing that I've felt missing from Montpelier is we have a lot of opinions, but we, we haven't voted for any commitment to see it through. So I hoped that if we had some staff on the board, we could get that commitment. And I understand, and Bill feels there's a conflict, I, and I can respect that, I was just hoping that maybe we could do something with staff. There have been some staff members that have volunteered to oversee the consultant once we hard them, and that's much appreciated. So as they do their work, there's somebody there knowing if it's completed and completed the way we want it. But I do feel that the Public Safety Authority Board has been stymated because there's been two empties vacancies in, on the Montpelier side and one in Berry, so it would be really appreciative if we could put somebody on. Uh, Dan Richardson had his arm twisted and would consider it, and I, you know, I would like to propose him even though I didn't do an official nomination, but if uh, that would be the pleasure of the council and Dan's still saying yes, that he'd be willing to try it out and add another voice to the table as we go forward in choosing this vendor and seeing this need assessment done for all of central Vermont towns, because their communication is light years behind. And it's really time to get everything updated and make public safety communication more, not, you know, not of the most expensive, not the, but much better than it is, and moving us into the 21st century. I think this is a good time, the state's new public safety commissioner is really, has an interest in regional dispatch centers. He has an interest in the state sharing some of the costs, so I, I think this is a good time to get our need assessment done. So then we can go to the state and the towns and say, this is what we need, this is why we need it, and this is what you have now, and this is how we get from where we are to where we want to be. So I would love to have Dan aboard, and if you're still willing, I'll nominate you. You want to speak?
Sure, um, no, I'm, I'm, and I've had conversations with you, Donna, and I've had conversations with Kim uh, as well, um, and I'm certainly willing to step up in, in part because I, I, as you put it, and very, put it very well, which is that um, you know, there are, there is this point of a needs assessment and understanding how to integrate some of these communication systems in the region as dispatch and as, as needs become more um, more integrated rather than less, I mean, the idea that we exist as these little fiefdoms separated and uh, out of communication is just not a reality, so I'm, I'm happy to step up forward. I can't make a, you know, I'm not going to make a long-term commitment, but I will certainly serve and hopefully add, add to the voice uh, of Montpelier in this, because obviously we have a big stake in this, so I'm uh, I'm happy to, I'm happy to step forward. Of course, if anyone else on the council has a braver burning desire, um, I'm happy to withdraw in, in lieu of that individual, uh, whoever he or she may be.
Oh, but we have two seats, Dan, they can join you.
Well, I'm, I'm expecting a, a stampede of names to come forward, is what.
I'm looking for a second to my nomination of Dan.
I'll second that.
Okay, um, any further discussion? Um, alright, all in favor, please say aye.
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 Well, I'll recuse myself for uh.
And uh, yes, Donna, go ahead.
Cause there's a board, a public safety board meeting tomorrow night, I've already talked to John Odom, and he is willing to do the oath, and we could either do it right now, quick, or at the end of city council meeting, whichever is your or the mayor's pleasure. But you do need to take a swearing in in order to attend and vote tomorrow.
Hmm, um, I think we should probably do that at the end, is that okay? We'll all still be here, so.
Yeah, that's fine, thank you.
We just can't forget.
Yeah, Dan, don't forget Dan.
Okay.
Okay.
Okay, great.
Are you willing to take public comment on this topic?
Absolutely, go ahead, Steven.
Well, I, I think that Donna has articulated well the, the problem, the stagnation that has occurred due to uh, I only realized recently that Perry uh, folk officials uh, have safety issues, not dissimilar to Montpelier's, but we just don't talk about them here in Montpelier, where the radios don't work, and they resented paying uh, their share of the money, even though it was the voters that appropriated the money to be spent on a study when they have uh, life-threatening uh, lack of communications in certain zones. So I think that's the, going to be, have to be addressed early on in this study. But uh, more importantly, it's the billions of dollars in the, well, the house, in the, coming from Congress that that the treasurer reported to the uh, fiscal committee, that we need to have a plan in place uh, by next spring if we intend to draw on any of those grant funds to upgrade any of this infrastructure. So it's very high time that we get, get off the dime and get a plan together. Montpelier, it, need, this probably needs to be a half hour on an agenda somewhere, or a subcommittee appointed of the council to get into the nitty gritty. Montpelier is in a conflict position with its agreement with Cap West, uh, Capital Fire, that does not adhere to open records or public meeting law, and they, in effect, are a contractual obligator of the city, uh, a contractual partner with the city. So we've got in effect a, a conflict in how we run our dispatch, which will be remedied long-term by the success of CDPSA, but in the meantime, it's an impediment. And that's why I think it's good that the chief uh, may not be on this council, cause uh, there, there are vested interests here that need to be fleshed out and brought into the light, and equipment inventories and valuations, et cetera. So I just want the council to be aware of how important this is and that it's been neglected for far too long. That's fine, thanks.
Great, thank you so much, Steven, um, good points. Um, alright, so I think we're ready to move on. Um, so the next item is uh, the potential new winter parking uh, strategy or plan. Um, uh, Jack, did you have something?
Yes, I just noticed that Kim Cheney just uh, turned off his cloaking device, it is now visible, and so I,
Oh!
Well, before we move to the next topic, I just wanted to see if he had anything that he wanted to add to this discussion.
Yes, thank you.
No obligation, of course.
Thank you, Jack, and thank you, Donna, thank you all, and thank you uh, Dan for volunteering, this is a critical time, and I really appreciate your support, and I look forward to working with you. I've had some interesting conversations with Chief Pete, and I think we can work together and do something really good for both cities, so thank you all.
And thank you, Kim, for all of your time and dedication to this group as well.
Thank you, Jim.
Okay, uh, so the, the next thing is um, well, actually, does anybody else? I don't want to go too clearly here, um, anybody else want to comment on the CVPSA? Okay. Alright, so um, the next item is the winter parking um, plan, so I'm going to turn this over to Donna.
Donna Casey.
Yes. Well, sorry, yes.
Yeah.
Or.
So Zach Logix is here with me, I want to acknowledge that this um, alternative way of dealing with our winter parking is here before us because of his um, innovation and convincing us that this could be a very good solution to some of the challenges that we have. Um, he will go into greater detail, but I'm just going to hit the high key points of this um, proposed um, ordinance, um, so first, um, there are, sorry, I just want to find my place, okay, so um, we've had a variety of people ask us why we're proposing the change. Um, it, and these are the reasons why, it is intended to simplify winter parking. Plowing, we know will be able to be accomplished more efficient, efficiently, and roads and sidewalks will be cleaner because um, it allows us to clear the sides, um, the sidewalks and the sides of the road at the same time that we're clearing um, one side of the road and then moving to the next side, and so we don't have the snow buildup. We'll have less, we anticipate we'll have less overtime uh, logged throughout the year, which is both critical to um, the city's financial situation as well as to our staff's personal um, situation, we end up having people with hundreds of hours of overtime um, towards the end of the year, and that, in my estimation, is not the best option for managing our staff. Um, we also anticipate that um, once people adjust to the system, we'll have fewer parking tickets issued by the Montpelier Police Department, and the result is that costs to residents will diminish. Um, Public Works, as of today, posted information on our Facebook page, and will be continuing to do that, we're inviting residents to um, listen, look, read over the proposed um, new ordinance and to send us their questions. Um, three of them have been posted, um, we'll post them on Facebook and we'll archive them on our Public Works um, website uh, so that people can review them before they make another ask. Um, we're going to go into more detail tonight, answer questions about the proposal, but in its simplest form, the proposal is that on calendar days, having even numbers, parking will occur only on the side of the street that has even numbers on it. Um, and the same will be true for the following day when we ask our um, parking to move to the other side of the street. Um, again, visually, if you can imagine that, um, it makes it so much easier to plow to the curb, clear the sidewalk, and move on. Um, it does require that residents will need to shift their cars uh, to the appropriate side of the street on a daily basis. We've looked into situations of how other communities in the United States who have this kind of ordinance manage it, and there are a variety of different ways. Um, so there's no, no obvious um, preference that was um, determined by that uh, review. So what we're proposing is that um, no earlier than 5:00 PM on any given day, all the cars would move from 5:00 PM to 10:00 PM um, on the night for the following day's side of the street, so if you are parked on an even side and you get home at 6 o'clock in the evening and you could just park on the other side of the street and you would be safe for the following day, but you could park anywhere between, and move that car anywhere between 5:00 PM and 10:00 PM and not be out of sorts with um, the methodology that we're proposing. We do expect that there will be a little bit of confusion at the beginning, we don't anticipate that we'll be issuing um, tickets for um, cars that are parked there a little bit later, or a little, um, or um, in the evening, but we may be leaving uh, notes on the windshields reminding people of that, we have yet to work that out. Um, if the council does end up adopting this proposal, the alternate side parking, as it's called, will begin on November 15th and end on April 1st, and that's whether or not there's any snow. So if we don't experience snow, we are going to start that on that date in order to get people oriented to the process. Um. There are streets that, for a variety of reasons, and Zach will go into this in greater detail, um, can't accom- accommodate alternate side parking programs. Um, and depending on what those issues are, there are different rules that will apply. It may sound um, like we're going to have an awful lot of idiosyncrasies, but that's absolutely not true, there's only four different tables that would occur, so I'll go through them really quickly. So there are some streets that absolutely will not allow parking at any time during the winter. Table one in your packet lists those streets. There are streets where cars can only park on odd numbered side of the street or only park on even number side of the street for the entire time. Um, and tables three and four identify those streets. One other exception is where parking meters are located and also in areas nearby schools. Both of those circumstances, there are exceptions to the alternate side parking rule. In those areas, parking is allowed between the daytime hours of 7:00 AM to 5:00 PM. And table two um, indicates where those streets are. Um, so that's the quick version of that, I'm sure if you've read the ordinance over, and I'm sure you all have, um, that that sounds familiar to you, and Zach can get into more details.
Uh, good evening, good evening, everyone. So first of all, I actually have a question, do I need to physically read the ordinance um, as presented to make this a first reading, or are we set to continue to have a conversation?
Yeah, you do not need to read it.
Awesome, uh, so as Donna talked about, we've already gone through the majority of this, um, on the odd number days, so you park on the odd side of the street, even on the even side of the street. Um, we've gone through and uh, taken each street and tried to find a place, find a appropriate spot for them, uh, meaning table one is there, no parking anytime, table two is the downtown area where daytime parking would be allowed, table three is the even only, even only, and table four is odd only. Um, I have not, I did not provide a list in your packet of all of the streets that have alternate side parking, uh, but we are, we've been working on that, and then I have it in front of me, being currently developed. Um, so in areas that you'll, you'll see on the no parking list, uh, that there is quite a few streets that have no parking all the time. Um, those streets are typically, they're narrow, or they have a really steep grade, which has been problematic for us to clear, which is why those streets have initially gone into that list. Um, there are, we can have discussions about i- if you feel like a certain street shouldn't be on that list and should be considered for even or uh, odd only or alternate. Um, but we tried to take a stab at what we thought would work um, operationally and for um, the residents of Montpelier based on what we see with uh, parking counts, so we did go around and do some, some count data to see how, how much parking was utilized on the various streets, uh, which is where we started in terms of where we wanted to allow odd and even side parking and um, so with that, um, I think we can just open it up to questions, clarifications, and have a little bit of a discussion. Um, this is, we're not, I will tell you that we're not completely, not everything is set in stone here. Um, we can bring things from one table to another, um, but where we are now is having a discussion about um, what we have proposed and if there needs to be changes made.
Hey, thank you, um, so I'm gonna officially open the public hearing, um, since that's what this is supposed to be. Uh, and actually, just a clarification on this, um, for our procedural purposes, are, are we thinking of this as a first reading of the ordinance? Okay, we are, I just wanted to make sure that that was true, okay. Um, well, I have just one very small uh, comment, I, well, besides that, I, I think this is great and I am uh, looking forward to this um, being implemented, I think this is going to be a really good thing, and certainly the transition will be um, tough, I mean, it'll be a learning curve, uh, but the sooner we can uh, communicate, or actually, I know it's, it's already sort of started to, to get out there, but the more we can promote, uh, you know, that this is happening, I think will be, it'll make that transition better. I appreciate the part about uh, 5:00 to 10:00 PM being the transition time, if somebody needed to switch sides of the street, you know, if it's, if it was parked during the day and needs to be on the other side the next time, I think that's helpful. Um, but uh, super small, um, in the table that says daytime uh, parking, I think it would just be helpful to call it daytime only uh, parking, uh, just to help clarify that, that it's still okay to park there.
Correct.
Or it's, it becomes alternating at night.
Correct, and I think, but that is an important distinction that we need to make. Correct. And I, but that is a, an important distinction that we need to make um in the flyer and in other places that. Um, that, you know, it at, after ten P M, you need to be on the correct side. Um, so that we can, when we get in there at four A M in the morning, we can clear to the curb line and do what we need to do prior to the downtown reopening.
Mm-hmm. Um, I have one more question, but I'm actually gonna save it and see what other thoughts. Uh, Lauren.
Um, I have a few little uh more like typo-y things that I can email to everyone in a second. Um. Uh, but one question, I mean, I, I think it's a so- somewhat clarifying, just getting some language in here. Um, places where like the even only parking um streets, it's also just even only days. Um, just being really clear. I'm, I'm assuming that's correct, right, Zach?
Uh, so it is on those streets for even and odd, it's all of the time. Uh, so we're asking people to move to the other side of the road between five and ten. So during that window, people could theoretically be parked on both sides of the street if it was allowed during that time. Um, but at that point, then at, by ten P M, they need to be on the correct side of the street.
But, but for an odd only street, then they can park on odd days on that street, on the i- odd side. But on an even day, there's no parking on that street?
So that's something that we need to kind of have a, a little bit of a discussion about. Uh, there's places that uh I'm not sure that. Um, that will fully work. Um, Berlin Hill being one of them. I know that there is a lot of residents. We can't just put people on the other side of the street. Um, so I could kind of go either way on this, but I had a feeling that it would be an exemption, a full exemption to the rule. Where we would allow it all of the time. Um, and that would mean that uh if we needed to clear there, we would have to post for no parking. But that's why we're trying to keep this list smaller, so that if the amount of streets that we actually have to physically go out and put no parking signs is. Um, very few.
Okay, so I might look at just the ordinance language again to make sure that that's clear, if that's the um, the way it's going to work.
You need to add another.
Works, people have more parking options. Um, just a couple other questions. Um. I guess, one, just, can you remind us what the signage will be like? Just knowing that there's a lot of streets where there isn't necessarily a building nearby with a street number that's easily visible. Um. And I know you had mentioned uh last time that there's, you know, a lot of signposts and things you can just use, um but. Could you just speak a little more to what the signage will be like to make so people know?
Yeah, so, um, I would, I've done a little bit of research uh looking at other communities and other communities have uh simply kind of. Passed this and not really changed signage at all. Um, with that being said, I don't think that that is necessarily a great idea for us and Montpelier. Um, so what we're looking at is the alternating list and putting up a sign underneath it saying like alternate side parking, even side. Um, or something of that nature, um so that people understand where, where on the street it begins. And that they're allowed to do the alternating side there. Um, and I think for the majority of our streets, if you posted them on. At intersections, I think that that would work uh fairly well. Um, I'm thinking of like Berry Street, if you said alternate side, even side parking begins here. And then ends here uh type thing, that, that would be sufficient.
Thanks. I think my only other question, which, sorry, these are super nitpicky. Um. When you have the intersection as describing the start, like, is it always clear? Is it like? The, where the street starts, is it where it ends? Is, is there gonna be any confusion? Or, I mean, I assume there'll be. You know, a good adjustment period this year as we figure this out. It's gonna be like strict enforcement at these, but just, just so people know what. You know, if, if in front of their house is gonna be part of it or not, um.
So I, I think that it would be important to include the state statute of how far people should be parking regardless away from the intersection. Which I believe is like twenty feet. Um, so I think that we. I know that last year we had a lot of instances where we were working with residents and with PD for, to try to correct some of those behaviors. Cause people are parking like right up next to a stop sign and um making it problematic to begin with. Um, so I, I think if we kind of reinforce what people should be doing naturally anyways. Um, that that will help clarify when these zones start and stop um at the intersections.
Other comments, questions? Jack, go ahead.
Hi, just a couple. I, I like, I like this idea in general, the idea of uh making uh, you know. Saving uh the overtime, making things, reducing the burden on the workers and improving safety for workers. I think are all very good. Um, a couple of detailed things, do we? Think we'll be able to get the flyer into the uh, the next uh water bills? Is that what your plan was?
Yeah, so we will have the opportunity basically to put whatever information with the water sewer bills. Uh, we can have up to one page. So if that's the flyer, then that's fine. If we wanted to have a little bit of a more informational pan foot, that's fine, but we're limited to. Basically one additional uh attachment. Um, so it would probably be the flyer. But we may want to include a little bit more information uh on there, um which I haven't quite worked out those logistics yet.
Yeah, I think that's great. I think it's uh nice and graphic. I like that. More information would probably be a good thing. And I would also encourage you to put a phone number and uh, and a webpage uh link on there. So that you can hear for people.
Absolutely. Uh, phone number, webpage. Okay, thanks.
Okay, um, I see Donna and then He- Heather, did you wanna um, uh, address uh the, this issue? Okay, so we'll go Donna and then Heather.
Mine's real short. You know, you have two sides to that one sheet. So think about the other side of your paper.
Yeah, so I think that includes the, the front side where the bill is on. Uh, we're only, I, I believe that we've already accounted for that.
I thought you were inserting a whole new sheet of paper. No.
If we can, we will, and then we'll have both front and back, which would make it a lot easier. But I gotta make sure that we don't have anything else included and there's some other.
No, no, yeah, right. It just that, it would help spacing out some of the words. So when people read it, you know, people are so. Short of patience reading flyers. So if you can give them a second page and, and re-say things, spread it out. It, it's easier to read and remember. Thank you.
That's a great idea. If we can do that, well, we will.
Yeah, really good work. Really appreciate it.
Okay, uh Heather, go ahead.
Um, can you hear me?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay. Uh, I just had a few questions. So you said this is the, the first reading. So in other words, there's not a vote happening tonight.
The only vote that would happen tonight is probably to put on a, a second reading, uh unless we were gonna, I don't think we were gonna skip that. Um, so, yeah.
Uh, yeah, I agree uh with Lauren that I think the signs will be really important. And, you know, I'm sure that there's probably a lot going on and signs might not be able to get up. As soon as the proposed ban starts, but I have a feeling a lot of people in the city would, would like more specific signage. Up that's permanent. Um, are the tables available on the Facebook page?
Uh, um, they can be, they certainly can be. Uh, we can have them posted, uh probably. Uh, well, by the end of the week, our, it's our secretary's um birthday tomorrow, so she's not in. Uh, but by the end of the week, we can put them up there.
Okay, and it sounds like, um, you guys are still ironing things out in regards to the odd. And even streets, like streets that only have odd and even. Um. Last year, there was the discussion about turning some streets into no winter parking. And Sidley Ave was one of them.
Yes.
So I saw on the Facebook page that it said some streets may be too narrow. And would accommodate overnight parking. But then I was confused when those streets would be plowed.
So I, let's just talk simply because I think that's the one that you're referencing uh in particular. Um, so the section between Berry and College, this, the section that we discussed last year um during um, during the winter months. Um, that would be between Berry and College, it would be even only. So you would be able to park um between Berry and College on the even side of the street, uh on even calendar days. And then on, from College to Saban, um it has both sides. So we would allow odd parking uh on the, on, on the odd side of the road above College Street. Um, and that is really uh was to address some of the resident, residential concerns that you yourself and others voiced. Um, so that's, we looked at some of these areas that might be a little bit trickier and tried to make sure that we had reasonable accommodations. For the residents living in those areas.
Mm-hmm, yep.
Okay, um, thanks for the clarification. I do wanna say I think it's a really good idea. And um, I agree that I think uh this proposed plan would make plowing a lot more efficient. And um, I think it will be a little confusing at first, but I think it's a good idea.
Thanks, Heather.
Thank you. Um, other, actually, I kinda wanna jump in um on that with um. You know, with the, with the question about posting the, the, the tables. Um, I don't know if, if this is too much work, like, that's perfectly fine, but I'm, I could also picture having a map. That's like maybe color coded, that has like, you know, so you could just look up your street um that way. Um, as well for those who might find that easier. If that's too much, you know, like, fair enough, but just in terms of communicating that, that might be a useful tool.
Uh, I, and that is absolutely fine. And if you actually look here, uh, we have, so we did a draft map that goes.
Yeah.
Um, so we have already gone through and, and done that. Uh, the what, we just haven't quite made it public viewing yet. Uh, we are going to, I have a, a hard copy here. We are gonna put it in City Hall, uh so that people can stop by and look at it. Um, and uh if, if anyone had specific uh like areas of concern. We could take a snapshot and send them, have a discussion like on a one-on-one basis to address a specific area.
Okay, um, and then I'm gonna tag on one more thing here and then we'll go back to um, uh, other comments. Uh, sort of thinking about the map, um, I, again, this. This is like, this is too much work and that's, you know, that's fair, but um, I'm just thinking about places where like. As we transitioned from the last uh configuration of winter parking, uh where there were. No, um, you know, there were some places that no parking was allowed ever. Um, I assume all of those places. Are on this list as well. And I guess I'm wondering about like, are there, would there be places that show up differently? In, in, in a negative way. It, it sounds like there are some places where, you know, we had to bet it because it was too narrow, but. Too narrow in the last scheme, but, but maybe we could do alternate side and that'd be okay. So that's actually like broadening. Um, you know, the available parking, but is, did any go the other direction? Does that make sense?
There were a few, and that's why we're kind of leaving it open for discussion, like Wheelock Street is a super steep grade. Um, I naturally just don't see much use of people parking there. I have come by early in the morning and seen one car parked on the street. So we may have a specific issue with that resident uh towards the bottom of the hill. Uh, but there were a few that we put in there because it, it seemed to make the most sense. Um, there wasn't a clarifying ordinance one way or another. Um, but on areas like Phelps and Wheelock, we put them as no parking and we could have a discussion if there is um. I mean, we, we could end up doing something with alternate side parking there, uh but, you know, if we, if it's slippery and we're coming down the hill. Then, you know, it, it would be better for cars to be off the road. Um, but with that being said, uh, we're not against um having the discussion. On some of these streets.
And one, I mean, I, particularly for those streets, especially if there's not very many of them, I do actually wonder. Uh, we should send out some kind of notification to them to let them know that that's of the change.
See, yeah, so some of the hard thing is that there was not any ordinance language written on.
Oh, okay.
Streets. So because there's never been an issue, they weren't included one way or the other, right?
Uh, okay, okay.
From the band to where we were in the last couple of years, there is no reference for a lot of these streets. So this, we're develop, we're now developing the first spot within.
True.
Um, because historically, everything has been done really on a case-by-case basis.
Mm-hmm.
It, stuff in our ordinance just gets added and it not, so we're kind of looking to overhaul everything. And to clean it up so that it's consistent. I, I mean, you'll notice in areas where we have. Um, residential parking programs uh along the First Avenue, uh Ridge Street, West Street. Um, so those we, we are gonna propose for alternating, uh but it, there's just been a lot of trying to, to clean things up. And trying to make it consistent, uh so that um it's not, it's not so um. It, it's hard to follow the ordinance and I've read the ordinance several times and I find it a little bit hard. Uh, because you have to look in multiple sections, you have a nighttime restriction for the winter, you have uh restricted all the time. You have uh your residential parking program. So we're trying to kind of retweak and clean everything up in the same process.
Fair enough.
Um, with that being said, we could just go through the ordinance and, you know, identify which ones, highlight them, which ones are changing. From how it was written to where we are. And we can start with developing that list first and see how many it is. And how, how much um manual notices that would take.
I think that would be helpful, again, if it's, yeah, I think it'd be helpful.
Can, are you taking public, any more public comment?
Absolutely, Stephen, go ahead.
Yeah, uh, it's unclear, li- I, I think uh Lauren made the point, some sections are, it's not clear which. There's no street uh numbers on some of the buildings. So that, and is this a nighttime only issue? Or is this gonna be daytime for maintenance as well?
It's all the time, um, with the.
It's all the time.
Some of the, the downtown area, uh which is a different exception rule, uh but all of the other streets, it will be all of the time.
So even if there's no snow on the ground or no snow to be cleaned up, we're gonna forfeit that many parking places?
So there, almost every day, I think there was two days of last winter between November fifteenth and April first. When we were not doing winter operations related events, which is sanding, salting, clearing snow, pushing back. Um, even if it's, doesn't seem like it's snowing or does not seem intuitive, we are most likely out there doing work. Cleaning storm drains. Um, if you all remember last year or two years ago, we had the bad water break and our stro- our storm drains weren't. Uh, cleaned and it made a mess of our downtown. Um, those are the type of things that. Uh, with the availability of being able to actually get to the curb line and uh have those spaces available, um that we would be able to accomplish.
Yeah, I, I just wanna push back on that to the council that, that this, this seems like a gross over, overreach. Because we know that we're short-staffed and that those storm drains go months without being cleaned. And the ice, I've, I've had to call Public Works regularly because the ice stays on well past the time many people have fallen. So, you know, to basically pretend that by eliminating a lot of parking, Public Works is automatically gonna step up and start doing all this stuff. It's fallacy. So especially school streets specifically, there's, you know, we're gonna forfeit thirty places. Uh, you know, in one of the most congested and convenient parking areas, uh when there's no snow on the ground, just seems. Uh, absurd. Uh, second, you know, it, we got a lot of visitors coming to town who don't know the, the rules. And if they're not clearly marked, they're gonna violate it. And, you know, unless you're gonna bag the meters on the sides that, you know, are. Are not banned, uh, that's gonna be a problem. And then secondly, as far as the notification, I mentioned this last time. I think you should look at some large posters trying, once you figure out how to explain it, and we're not there yet. Uh, some large posters, you could probably negotiate with City Center to put them in the old La Brioche windows where people can. where people can see them, put them outside the front City Hall portico where they're covered on a weighted easel, but where people don't have to go in and mingle in in the the COVID zone. So my my point is that this is going to take a whole lot of education. I've raised the red flag of the issues I I'm opposed to. And I hope you'll give it more thorough consideration. Thanks.
Okay, thank you, Stephen. All right. Other comments, questions, thoughts? Connor, go ahead.
And I I'm happy to make a motion, but you know, I just wanted to say, I think this is a really creative solution, and I appreciate our staff thinking outside the box on this so much. You know, and we'd be kidding ourselves if we didn't say we we've got probably pretty tough times ahead fiscally here. So if this can save some overtime, that's important, but also the quality of life for our DPW workers here. Again, I think we'll unfortunately be facing more water breaks and type of thing. So to have them devoted to those projects, I I think that's a good thing and people will get used to it. So unless there's much other discussion, I I would move that we go to second reading on this, and I see Lauren just sent us some changes that hopefully we can incorporate before the next reading.
I'll second that. Okay, there's motion and a second, but I do want to check any any other thoughts, comments, including from the public. Uh Lauren?
I would just say, I think what I what I sent and are just really nothing that changes any meaning in the ordinance. It was just a couple kind of phrases, I think, just clarifies a little bit more. I do think if we need to figure out the odd even and if if we're going to, I think it needs some clarifying language in the ordinance. If we're saying that on the odd only streets that you can park all the time and that even only you can park all the time, or if we're saying that it follows the rule, because the way I would read it, it's either confusing or I would think that if it's an odd only, that it's only odd calendar days, because that's what it says earlier in the ordinance. So I just, I think we need to clarify that in our own minds and in the ordinance language. And I mean, I I liked the idea, if we can make it work, that people could park there all the time. I mean, the more parking, the better. It seems like it creates potential challenges with the street plowing and stuff, so I don't know how that would work, but if we can do it, great. But if we need to follow the way the rest of the streets are going to be, that would be understandable.
I did, Donna and I were talking earlier today. I think that it's important that we write in some language about the ability to make changes. If we're realizing that something is not happening, allowing Bill to authorize a change to maybe take something off of a no parking list. So that it does that we don't have to go back through all of this to get approval. I think that that's important if we want to really look at being having a successful program, we need the ability to tweak it if we need to.
One thought on that, and then I see you Heather. For some other ordinances, we have the ordinance just reference a table, which is not included in the ordinance language itself. So I I wonder if that's a possibility. It would make it easier for it to be a little more flexible. But anyway, that's something you all can work determine. Heather?
I apologize if you already said this, but like currently, there's still those designated areas around town where overnight parking is available. For example, I think, you know, so the street on the by the Co-op.
Stone Cutters?
Right, so let's say certain streets were just too crowded to park there, there would still be still over parking lots, right?
That is correct. One of the things that we looked at is I we did some counts about our parking lots and we can really only truly the way that it's signed accommodated seventy two people to overnight park between the lot that we have behind City Hall and Stone Cutters. Having driven down Stone Cutters during a storm, everyone parks there. So I'm not sure that there we're not overstepping the bounds into parking in to permit areas or the the nature conservancy or other areas. We've only, I mean, we have that one specific spot on Stone Cutters where we would sign for overnight, but we would still allow that. And the other thing that we are looking at is providing a a long term overnight parking at Poolside Drive up by the Ball Field. So if you ever got towed, your car was towed to the Ball Field Road to allow for people that don't have a driveway and that need long term overnight parking. The thought is that you could go up to Poolside Drive and be able to park there so that if you're gone for a week during the winter, you're okay. You don't have to have someone come out and move your car. You don't have to worry about any of those issues.
Great, thank you.
Mayor, can I make one more comment about the notification? I think it's unwieldy for notifications to have to go into multiple venues. Facebook puts a paywall or a registration requirement. Front porch forum could be argued. I think creating a more usable city website and just making one destination where everybody finds this information is better in the long run. Because the information can be inconsistently interpreted or reposted on those other forums.
It's a good point about posting it on the city's website, and I assume we'll have that pretty prominently once it's together.
We're gonna, if you've ever been onto our our website, we do have a page for the winter parking ban. We will be in the in the process of making a draft page that will include comments and a log of any concerns that people have raised and providing a link to the map and some more information. We just it's been moving pretty fast, so we're we're doing what we can to stay ahead.
Okay, all right. Well, thank you. And so this will be on our agenda for the, oh, actually, we're about to say a vote on on that. I can't can't say whether or not yet. Okay, so there's a motion and a second. Any further comments on this? Okay, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
And opposed? Okay, so that motion passes, so we will be taking this up again for a second reading. Thank you for all of your work on this, Zach and Donna. So grateful.
Thank you. Thanks for having us.
Yeah, absolutely. And we'll try to help push out the the information ourselves as well.
All right. Thank you so much.
Okay. All right, so on to a discussion about follow up to the policing, a discussion that we had. Can't remember if it was the last meeting or a couple of meetings ago, but right, so for this, I am going to turn it over to Bill or the chief.
I'll start, but I see the chief is here. So two meetings ago, the the chief outlined, you know, his thoughts and his memo about the department and the council gave general approval to the plan to move forward, but one of it involved, a specific request involved the creation of a committee to look at, you know, the chief specifically talked about for strategic planning for the committee, but I think there was desire to look at other things as well. And so we said we'd get back to you with a specific recommendation that you could work from. And so we've provided you a memo with that. Also at that meeting, we're you know, the group has been active and I see a couple of them here presented eleven requests or demands. So we provided our responses, our thoughts on those. Clearly, obviously, the most substantive one is is how we're going to handle the budget, and that's still a month or two away, but certainly biggest impact. I did want to talk quickly about the very first one, about the school resource officer, because that has sort of pushed to the head of the class. As as many of you may be aware, the the school board last week voted to temporarily suspend the activities of the school resource officer while they formed a committee to take a look at actions. There seems in communication with school officials, there's there's a couple of issues. One, there's not complete clarity that that was intended to include the city. I think some people felt it was and some it wasn't. So I think it would be helpful if the city tonight, if we made some sort of motion to formally request that the city government be involved in in this process so that it's on record that we we think that because we're partners in in this situation that that we be at the table. And obviously, we would provide whatever information was necessary for that process at any rate. And secondly, just so that the council's aware, there's been communication between the chief and the superintendent and the school board, just about clarification of actual roles. And so you may hear about that, but I think just to make clear what what the expectations are and aren't for response and that what what these decisions mean, so that there's so that if something does occur or a situation comes up, if it's been thought about in advance as opposed to, you know, why were the police there? Why weren't they there? Et cetera. So that sort of interim conversation is going forward, but so otherwise, I think that that first issue, the SRO issue is really being led by, oh, one last thing on that. So in addition to the school forming a committee and probably, you know, I'd advise you to to, if you wish, to be involved, to make a vote to to a formal request, and I can draft that for you. The plan that had been discussed with between the superintendent and I and the mayor and the chair of the school board prior to last week's vote was there would be a joint committee and that we would get an outside facilitator so that was a more neutral party operating the meeting so that all all people with all voices felt safe and that nobody was trying to drive an agenda. So we reached out to the group, created discourses, who is already, we've already hired to do our diversity work here in for the city from the social justice committee. They've provided provided a proposal to school and to us, and and the plan was that we would spit it, us spit it, split it the cost financially if since we split the officer, we will be joint partners on this and our share will only be twenty four hundred dollars. That's within, you know, so I told them we were okay with that, since that's within my dollar limit. But making sure that you've all heard that, and if you have concerns about that. Again, some school board members may want to not have the city involved, in which case I assume the school would then assume the full cost, but it's to be marked down. At this point, I think the assumption is we're going to be collaborating and cooperating, working together, hiring, sharing the neutral facilitator. And folks from this council would have a seat on that committee table. And when I talk about city officials, I'm talking about you, the elected officials, not me, not the chief, not anyone like that. So that's the overview. Happy to obviously talk about any of these issues.
So I actually wonder if we should take up the SRO question actually first, and then move on to talking about the other, like the proposed strategic planning committee. So how, so taking this in two separate parts, how do you all feel about requesting to participate on that task force? So I see, oh, I see some thumbs up, but I also see Dan and Lauren. We'll go in that order.
Okay, I I would support being a part and making a motion to that extent. I think in part, and I listened to a substantial part of that school board discussion last week. It seemed as if a lot of the discussion involved some assumptions as to how some of the functions of the SRO would would act going forward, which I think necessarily implicates us as a city as well, you know, the future of the SRO, whatever shape or form it would take. Because it is a partnership. You know, we it, I think our input's pretty critical to this process. And, you know, we have a role and need to provide input at the table with this with this conversation. So I would I'd fully and strongly support that. And I, you know, I think it makes sense. You know, it's each board can come to their own conclusions or a joint conclusion. But I I think the process has to be shared and there has to be a shared conversation about it. So I would strongly support that. That's just my point.
Great. Thank you. Lauren?
Yeah, I mean, I would I would echo that. Also, listened to the most recent school board meeting and there were, you know, I think policy implications and also potential budget implications for the city. So having us be you know, at the at the table and, you know, there are also discussions that seems, you know, I think the way they even worded their resolution was, you know, the kind of policing in and near the schools, which seems like pretty encompassing and, you know, gets into city functioning as well. So I think just to bring that broader perspective would be really valuable to the process. And also kind of keeping good communication with the the rest of the conversation we'll have tonight of the, you know, the the broader conversation that we're having as a community around policing and how the SRO does and doesn't fit within that. I think would be valuable to just keep good communication and collaboration. And I'll be at the table together. So I'd also support a motion to that effect.
Okay, great. And then did I see Jay? And then Connor?
Yeah, sorry, quickly, I'll just add to, you know, support Lauren and Dan's comments. You know, watching the the school board meeting from last week and seeing the resolution and how broad it was and as much as you know, they passed the resolution knowing that they need to form this committee, but didn't necessarily provide any specific guidance in terms of who was going to be involved, but seeing the obvious implications to to the city. And that it makes sense, I fully support a motion that we would want to have a, you know, a place at that table and and be a part of it because it's yeah, as Lauren said, it goes, you you know, as the resolution that they pass, it goes even beyond, you know, just the community around the schools, et cetera. So thank you.
Great, Connor?
Oh, yeah, just a question. Is the thought, and I I'm sorry, I didn't see the school board meeting. Is the thought that this would be resolved within the current fiscal year, or you would gather the information you need to make a decision for the following fiscal year?
I think that's, I think that's uncertain from the schools. You know, presumably, the city and school need to make a decision about any number of these budget issues by, say, November, Decemberish as as we prepare. And so and that would be for the next fiscal year. So, you know, it would seem that if there's a if there's a decision, we're we're going to not have the SRO, for example, then both the city and school would know that in time to prepare their budgets accordingly. Conversely, if the decision is to to go forward with it, then it would be, you know, in time to have in the budgets. So, you know, maybe we could have preliminary budgets prepared in December and the final decision not made till January, but I think both both the city and school would have to decide before their budgets are put to a vote, what what was included for next year. This is my assumption only, nobody said this, but I would presume since both the city and school have a budget for in this present year, that if the decision is made to go forward in the future, that it would continue, then it would take up during this year as well from that point forward. But that's just my thought of that, that that's not based on anybody else's statement or comment.
Donna and then Lauren?
I just had a question about the suspension. Does this impact the officer involved in any way? Is he or she reassigned duties?
So, yeah, so the officer, SRO Diane Matthews is continuing to work on patrol and working with homeless and doing other things. But basically, there were specific school resource officer functions that the school said, you know, we would rather not have happen while we're sorting this out, but there that left a lot of unanswered questions. And so in addition to this committee, we're trying to sort out what what that means, you know, if we're called to the campus, what does that look like? Because one of the concerns was officers in uniform. But if there's no SRO, who would be in more casual dress? Then the only people that would respond to campus would be, any campus would be officers in uniform. And what if a third party calls, not a school official, if somebody witnesses something on a school, you know, so so there's just a lot of practical questions and we're not trying to create problems. We just want to make sure there's clarity. The SRO has handled truancy issues, you know, getting a truant student, is that something they still want the police to do? Even things as simple as some of the officers drop off and pick up children, their own children at school in uniform. You know, our assumption is they can still do that like any other parent, but is, you know, that ought to be clear. So So, um.
Well, part, part of my asking was for the person, but also was I felt like in the motion, maybe we need to push. I feel it's very time sensitive for this year, I mean, a committee can go a long time before making decisions. And I didn't get a sense from the school board, they put any time limits on it, did I miss it? So I I would like us to ma- maybe push it to say that we'd like to have this resolved um soon, within some time limit. You and Brian can make some suggestions on time. Jay, did you have an answer to that?
Well, well, my understanding is that, um, you know, part of the the um school board's. Thought around paying, and as as Bill mentioned, paying somebody to facilitate this process and to prom- and to engage the community. Is to not necessarily sort of punt it to the next fiscal year as a as a question that happens as we're putting our budgets together. But rather something that can be resolved by the end of the twenty twenty calendar year. So that we can move, so that the school district can move into the second semester, as it were, and starting in January. With a plan of what exactly the role of the SRO would be. Um, so and then, of course, yeah, there's so there's that short term, looking at the, you know, the calendar, the school's calendar year. But then also thinking about what the budget implications are for our next next fiscal year. But but looking to, you know, get this resolved. You know, in a way that still allows for appropriate community engagement, but can get us all to a point where we can make a decision. To finish the school year and then move on from there. Hope that helps.
And I think part of the idea with of having outside facilitation is that, you know, the conversation at school board meetings and at city council meetings is great. But we we also have other agenda items, and so if the community can have a couple of focused meetings of, you know, two or three hours. Where they can really focus on this issue and all voices can be heard and listened to and. You know, we can maybe focus on the things we have in common and the goals we're trying to accomplish and then talk about the best ways for those to happen. That's that's the goal, you know, we're open to any kind of conversation, it's just I think it's important that people get away. I mean, we've heard a lot of voices that have a lot of concerns and those need to be aired and vetted and and taken seriously. So, um, we we, you know, appropriate time by both boards needs to be given. And so rather than, I think the initial thought that that the mayor and I had with the school board chair, the superintendent was rather than. City council embarking on the process to hear all these voices and the school board embarking on the process. That since we share this position, it made more sense to have the process together and have everybody hear the same comments at the same time. And work it through together.
And, well, Lauren, did you have something? And then Donna, yeah.
Um, just, I mean, it came up a little while ago now, but um just for clarity, for those who uh did not. Um, have a chance to listen to the school board meeting, so they did make clear that they were going to follow through on the financial commitment for this fiscal year. They said, you know, voters approved the city and the school board budget, I mean, that was kind of, the conversation went a little. Um, all over the place, but then they did land there, so it it was looking at budget implications for the next fiscal year. Um, and, you know, I think it became clear and I think kind of feeds into that broader discussion we're gonna have have soon. But, you know, there's, if they're gonna change the system, you have done, you know, the this process looking at, well, what systems have we put in place? And we can't just take them away without anything to um to do instead, we need to, you know, build other systems. And so I think, you know, the the timeline, I think, will partly depend on how quickly could you get other things in place? If you did wanna transition to other models for certain aspects of um what services are currently being provided by the school resource officer. So that was my interpretation of the conversation.
Okay, oh Donna?
Just a short question about, Bill, do we, we have funds sort of loose hanging around to pay our share of facilitator? I presume if we're wanting to be partners, we are paying?
Yeah, so, I mean, we don't, right? We we're, we don't have money for anything. Um, I mean, honestly, right, we're we're in a bad situation, but this is a really high priority issue for the community. And I think there are a lot of um. Pained voices that are that are communicating and speaking out and they need to be heard and they need to be done the right way. Um, I think community trust is really important, so I think if the school board were running this or the city. There'd be a concern that somehow we were driving at an agenda or or whatever that that we had arranged process. So we've reached out to a group that does work like this and asked them to design a process, uh, and we would support. And and our share is is twenty four hundred dollars, it's not exorbitant. Um, uh, you know, obviously, if you all tell me you don't wanna spend that money on this process, I won't. But that that falls within my approval level and to me, that seemed like something that that was worth taking a chance on. And um, you know, investing the money in for um the sake of the community.
Thank you. Great, uh Connor?
Yeah, another just quick question, do we notice the community justice center at the table on this? Cause I thought like maybe one thing on the side of keeping the officer was that bridge with the CJC and coming up with like. Alternative methods of discipline that, you know, that then entail like, you know, putting somebody in a car or something, you know?
So, uh, they have asked to be, and I think they probably would be a part of it as this group meets. I I wanted, so you actually said a couple of words that I think are really important. Number one is that the school resource officer is not involved in discipline. School makes its own decisions about that, um, and so they, you know, that's. So that I want to be clear about that, um, you know, no one would be taken away in a car unless they'd committed a serious crime. And it couldn't be handled, by the way. Number two, the schools have adopted the restorative model for dealing with students. Uh, in crisis or in situations and the 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 justice center helps, has helped train the school and help facilitate that. And on occasion has has taken referrals when you're out of the school. One of the reasons frankly that we didn't ask the justice center, we talked about the justice center to lead this effort. Was they are an arm of the city government and even though they do what they do and they do it really well, again, and we just felt it was given people's. Um, comments that it was really important that it not be led by the city or a school, an agency in the city or the school.
Great.
You're gonna take public comment on this section?
Yes, we will, um, go ahead Stephen and then Lauren, go ahead.
So I I think you should exercise real caution, while I don't uh oppose the idea of. A kind of a collaborative uh issues uh process. It's also very possible for the city to be intruding into the school board's domain here with a heavy hand. And I think to the degree that, just like if Barry took issue with us on CBPSA, they don't come in and insert themselves into your city council meetings. The school board is its own elected body and to the degree the city wants to get involved. It needs to do so very lightly with by invitation and not by, you know, insertion. Uh, so I just wanna caution that that there's a likelihood, the sophistication of manipulation that goes on. Within our city government doesn't need to be imposed upon the school. Secondly, the caution about the school resource officer who has lied on official papers multiple times. And and misrepresented statutes. And so I have real concerns about the character, which I've called to the attention of the chief and gotten no response. So in the net latter half of this section, I wanna strictly, you know, advocate for the the uh oversight body. With subpoena power that can really investigate, uh, not not an advisory strategic planning, you know, we'll tell you what we wanna hear. But it oversight commission, so.
Okay, thank you. Um, Lauren?
Oh, I was just going to uh to say that um hiring creative discourse seems like a great move. Um, you know, we're already hiring them, as Bill mentioned, for the social and economic justice advisory committee process. So this feels like a good way of kind of building some community relationships and kind of it can, I think, feed into and help bolster even further. That work that we're already investing in, so at least I like the idea of if we're gonna have to spend some money, that's so hard to come by right now. That um in some ways, I think it can make that process even better with some of the groundwork that it can help lay in the community.
Yeah.
And just just a point actually that Steve Whitaker just raised, um, you know, I think we prefaced this by saying. We would, we were seeking a vote to request that the city be included in a joint committee, that that we are, that we are specifically not seeking to. Go to school board meetings and participate in their meetings, we are seeking to form a joint committee with them to work independently. Collaboratively, so I I do appreciate the point that we're not trying to muscle in on on school board.
Uh, Dan?
Right, and I guess I'll just pi- pick up that thread as well, I mean, you know, this is, this is a place where there is overlap. This is a city employee who has a contract with the school board to perform functions within the schools. Um, and so it necessarily, you know, im- implicates the city. Um, and given that the discussion, as Lauren pointed out, has has ranged well beyond. Um, so the four walls of the school to the school yard to even outside in the street. I think this is, a- again, this is just an important um issue in which we're not looking to substitute our judgment. Or impose our judgment on the school board, they're a duly elected body, they make their own decisions. But in part so that we understand, um, and there's some joint process because of the overlap in some of these issues. So it's, to me, this is just something that that makes ba- basic sense. And obviously, we're not approaching this as a um, y- you must do this. But um that we expect, we we would, we would strongly in uh encourage participation. Uh, with the city because of the importance, uh, and because we take this seriously.
Yeah, and I guess I would also just add to that, um, that one of my hopes for this committee, um, in addition to. Just digging into thinking about specifically the the SRO is also, you know, that they, whoever's on this committee. Will uh become experts on this and that requires uh taking some time to under- to understand. So that everyone's working from the same facts. So, wanna put that out there too. Uh, all right, so I don't think we have a motion on this, do we have a motion on this?
I'll I'll make a motion that we um direct. Um, or let me phrase it this way, I I make a motion that we make a request to the school board. That the city be included, uh, the city officers be included um in any joint committee that is formed. Uh, to discuss the future of the student, the school resource officer in Montpelier Roxbury Public Schools.
Second?
Okay, any further discussion about that, including from the public? Okay, um, all right, so all in favor, please say aye?
Aye.
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 And opposed? Okay, all right, so um, thank you for that and we'll um, we'll see how that goes. All right, so moving on to uh the follow-up from the uh policing discussion. Couple meetings ago, um, one of the uh proposals was to form a. Um, strategic planning advisory committee uh board. And so for this, um, either um, uh, Bill or Brian, would you like to say anything further about this particular part? Or um, we can also just start getting into questions if you, if there's something more to add?
I really don't have anything to add, we, this is, you know, we described this broadly, or the chief described this broadly. At that August twenty sixth meeting and we we put some specifics to it and some thought about what it would include. Um, to the point that Mr. Whitaker raised, um, you know, we, our, our form of government. Doesn't allow for subpoenas necessarily, we have elected uh state's attorney, elected attorney general who can perform that role. Um, our governance creates the city council as the oversight board for all city government, city managers operating. So we tried to create a structure that respected the form of government, but also provided constant information and public discussion about the issues that were involved.
So I for, I think it probably makes sense to um talk about this generally and um, and then we can get into more specifics. So, uh, general thoughts on this proposal, uh, Dan, go ahead.
Um, w- well, I think one of the things that I'd like to see uh on this committee or subcommittee, wh- whatever we would dub it. Um, would be a little bit of a deeper dive, um, than necessarily is what what is proposed. In in part, it seems like a lot of the discussion that we've been having as a community. Um, particularly at these these city council meetings, um, but I think in a larger context, in the larger community. Is a is a question about, you know, what are the roles of uh the police department? What are the uh current trends and future directions? And I I think Chief P did a great job in his report. Um, but I, I think one of the reasons at least I was motivated to um propose, to think about. And support the proposal of this committee was to look at, have a group of people, as you said, mayor, about the SRO. To do a deeper dive and educate themselves and become, you know, start to become subject matter experts about these, these issues. Um, as a way of building uh an understanding in the community, um, which is, you know, that's the. I I don't wanna say the downside, but that's one of the functions of a, uh, you know, professional driven city government. Is that average citizens may not have necessarily the full understanding of some of the more technical features of any given department. I certainly, you know, wouldn't know where to begin in in some of public works if if we were discussing that. Um, other than to, you know, say those are great blouse. Um, but I think, you know, i- in when we talk about policing, um, and we talk about twenty first century policing. And we talk about some of these community policing concepts, um, they can be a bit abstract or they can be um a bit dense. I think for e- us as city councilors, but certainly the larger community. So I'd like to see, you know, at at the very least, um, one of the charges of this committee to be. To looking into some of these deeper issues and that may be embedded in the idea of helping to build the strategic plan. Um, but I think it needs to be explicit that this would be, this would be a subcommittee that looks to, you know, become. Um, more versed in some of these, some of these issues, some of these topics, some of these trends, some of these data points. Um, that we can then use as a resource as a city council, um, and and the community to use as a resource as well. So that's, those are my initial thoughts and I'll stop there, but I have more to say.
Fair enough, other thoughts, uh, generally? Also, I I think it's a a great idea to consider that we need to, you know, with the forming of this group. That sort of step zero is getting ourselves educated, um, and whoever's on that committee. Um, and and taking a a deep, a deep dive, I I appreciate that. Um, other thoughts? Uh, Connor, go ahead.
I I was just a bit unclear if if the committee has like so- sort of a thought that it's like a start and an end date. Where specific recommendations will be brought to council and you you would expect that they'd be acted upon. Or whether this will be an ongoing committee that goes years into the future. Cause like, you know, I think like, you know, if you're gonna commit to serving on it, right, that's a, it's a horse of a different color there, so, um, yeah, just uh. We would wait.
All right, I can tell you, we, we talked about this and I, and maybe, you know, we didn't wanna complicate things, right? So we didn't wanna create like two different committees and, you know, also, I think that the idea is, and you know, you could end up transitioning people along the way. So, so let me ask, I've I've said stuff without answering your question. The idea is it would be an ongoing committee that, but that its initial work in in, I don't think, I don't wanna speak to the chief. I don't think we have any objections to a deep dive and I I think that is, you know, when we talked about a strategic plan, it means how will we strategically address these things? So, um, if you wanna add those kind of words to it, that's, I, that's in sync with what we were thinking. So I thought it was maybe doing that kind of stuff first, um, you know, maybe taking a hard look at at the policies that are already in place. Taking a look at the twenty first century policing, all those things that we talked about, that that, and so that that may come out with some recommendations to. The council that says here's, here's how we see the department moving forward in the future. But it similarly, there ought to be a group that is, you know, I mean, we provide all this information to the public, we provide it all to you. But there ought to be a group that's maybe, you know, looking, we suggested quarterly, but I mean, as much as you want, at at things like crime statistics. we suggested quarterly, but I mean, as much as you want, at things like crime statistics, at things like use of force reports, at things like incidents, the things, you know, we listed some of those things, so that in addition to planning, it's kind of a, how is the department doing? And what, what are the key trends that we see in the community? What, how are things being addressed and providing a place for that conversation to occur on a regular basis? So it may be that there's a group of people that form, do some of the early work, and then say, okay, you know, not time for some new members for the more regular ongoing reporting. But the idea is that, you know, if people really want transparency in policing, there needs to be a regular review of what's happening in a regular place to publicly talk about it with more time than just in a council meeting.
Fair enough. Donna, go ahead.
My question, I at first initially thought it was a bit top-heavy with three council members. A discussion with Dan Richardson helped me understand better perhaps the advantages, but then I'd want more stakeholders. I feel especially initially when we were going deep for understanding that we need to share this knowledge and growth and opportunity to do some assessment with our stakeholders. So it says two to four, and I feel that's sort of wimpy.
Let me be clear, this, if you choose to do this, whatever you add for the charge, and however you form the committee is your committee, this is an outline that we provided. So, you know, we can't tell you how to do this. I, I think.
I understand that, I'm just adding.
From my perspective, it was just more thinking about what makes for functional committees. So five to seven people are functional, you know, at what point does it become too large and unwieldy? But that's, that's not my decision to make, that's yours.
That's what I would add to it, I would just solidify more stakeholders.
Madam Mayor, whenever you take your public comment.
Sure, go ahead, Stephen, and then Jack, and then Lauren.
So I, I think it's important to distinguish between a strategic planning educational committee and an accountability commission. That, that when, when I have raised to you over many months or a year, various issues of, you know, officers stealing unopened beers from homeless people, prior issues with internal affairs officer refusing to report to his superiors or to the council. You know, we've got, we had two shootings in as many years, and this chief hasn't even seemed fit to go through the whole file and see whether we've got a dangerous cop on our force. And I called the issue of the SRO, Diane is a liar. So we can't let those things wait till this, you know, strategic planning commission may or may not end up with a recommendation to form a accountability commission. There needs to be some real oversight here, and if the city council wants to air it all out in public, that's one way. But I think, you know, I did hear Jack McCullough, you know, last meeting or so, speak similar thoughts about accountability board, an oversight board that can actually dig into this and take it seriously and do it sooner than later. So I want to just reiterate that that's not what I hear going on here. It looks like a deflection.
Okay, thank you. Yeah, interesting thoughts there. Jack, you, you wanted to go?
Thanks. I don't consider my support for a process like this to be a deflection. I think that we've got, I, I agree with Bill's idea that this would be a standing committee of some kind, it would have ongoing functions. The, the strategic planning, as I see it, naturally probably comes first because although I support some form of civilian review and oversight and review of uses of force and a lot of the things that I said last time, and that we, that are talked about as a memo, I don't think the council is in a position to make a decision, sorry, to make a decision for what should happen tonight. And I think that the deliberations and investigation of this committee will be part of the input to decide what, what the needs are, what the possible mechanisms are to provide the oversight that that the community decides is needed.
I'll trust your judgment on this one, Jack.
Thank you, yeah. Lauren, I think you are next.
Yeah, a few thoughts. So, I mean, I also think that, you know, although it feels like, you know, we can be ponderously slow in governmental decisions. I mean, I, I think having this kind of group created is really important. I don't think it precludes at all creating other structures. And I think it's exactly, has come up several times, the kind of expertise and deeper dive to figure out what structure would make sense. I've read and heard really conflicting things about, you know, even citizen oversight panels that are created well or poorly, and how they can function and well for a community. So I, you know, I think taking that lightly or trying to just, you know, jump into something without that really hard thoughtful work, and that's the kind of thing that I think this group could really look into is what, you know, what structure, you know, is that a good idea for our community, and what would it look like if so? So I, I think this is a great idea. One thing I was wondering about, and I think it's something that potentially the group could maybe put thought into it first, and I think it goes into the strategic planning piece, but I know that, you know, we've certainly heard a range of perspectives, you know, here at city council, heard a lot of thoughts at the recent school board meeting on policing. I think there's, you know, a wide spectrum of perspectives on the future of policing for the community. So just thinking about what kind of, you know, shared goals that a group could come up with. And I don't know if at some point we as a council need to give more clarity to, you know, what the, what the vision of the city council is to give them more specificity. I mean, if you look at the, the charge that was proposed here, I think it could be information gathering and could, but I, you know, it might be tricky for them, or people with different positions to know how they're bringing bringing forward. I know, I know a lot of us will be on it, so we could represent ourselves there. But, but just, you know, wanting to hone in potentially. And again, I think the group could do that, early meetings of just more like, what specifically are we trying to accomplish? What's, what are the shared vision and values underpinning this together? Really hope it's a process with a lot of public engagement and, you know, beyond just being open meetings, but really soliciting a lot of feedback and participation. I agree with Donna, we probably want, you know, a few more people, I think getting a breadth of perspectives would be helpful. And people can either be members, or maybe it's just actively soliciting participation for different issues. And it talks about policy recommendations, wondering if we want to also be clear that that could include budget recommendations as well, if there are any budgetary implications. Maybe that's implied, but just, that seems like a big piece of what, what could come out of it, and hopefully that would, you know, this group could be looking both short-term recommendations and this longer-term vision and policy analysis. So that's my hope. So, yeah, I leave it there. Thank you.
Other thoughts? Connor, go ahead, and then Dan.
I, I will be interested in hearing some public comment here, because we do have a group of people who have been coming, you know, to most council meetings. And I've asked the question, I don't know if I've gotten an answer, is it a formal group? You know, are these demands made by consensus? Are there point people to the group? Are there folks we should be meeting with? Who can we contact? And, and I really would like to know from this group of folks, is this something you're like willing to be a part of? Or do you see this as kind of like window dressing, or the illusion of public input? So, yeah, I think that like drives some of my decision-making, what the folks who have been coming in here every week think, and if you're, if you're willing to participate in this. So, not anything anybody on council can answer?
Well, with that, I might pause here a minute. Is there any, any other comments from the public on this?
I've got a comment. It was, let me start the video. It was more so on some of the other items addressed in the memo, but since Connor had asked, I figured I'd chime on in. I'm not sure, I do think people would be interested, but there is not a unified group. We are just concerned community members, so I'm not sure at the moment, but it's definitely something I'm sure others might want to speak to. And maybe I'll make my comment later if you're going to address the other parts of the memo.
Sure, let's, let's take that separately.
Okay, thanks.
Okay, thanks for that question, though. Okay. Any other comments? I guess that answers your question more or less, Connor, or sort of, right? Okay, so Dan, go ahead.
Well, just along, not Connor's point, but back to sort of Lauren's point. You know, I, I think that this subcommittee, I guess I would give it about six things, and I've actually sort of wrote it out a little bit to think about some of these things. You know, I think the charge, I, I think the, the function of the committee is, we're talking about two, two things, but it's not two mutually exclusive things. I think they build upon each other. And when we talk about the sort of deeper dig and, and education, that, that almost comes first, but it builds up sort of the second function, which is where the committee sees itself playing the best role going forward. And I think there is a tension, you know, between, do we set this up as an as a, as a resource for the city council, and the city council playing an oversight role? Or does this, does this subcommittee eventually take on some oversight functions or review? Or is it a mixture of the two? And I think that comes, I don't think anyone can necessarily answer that right now definitively. And I think it builds out of, you know, these, some of these initial conversations. And so, you know, I would see the six things that at least I would think for this committee would be to review the historic functions of the Montpelier Police Department, you know, where have we come from? And so this builds on what Chief Pete put into his memo, but, you know, sort of going off of that. The other is to, as I said before, to review modern policing trends and practices such as those bodied in the President's Task Force on 21st Century Policing and other reference materials. And then the third part, which gets to the point that I think gets to Lauren's point, is I think we, I think we do have to reach out, or this committee would have to reach out to community stakeholders. And, you know, I think we have to cast a fairly broad net on that, not just, not just members of the community, individual residents, but, you know, some of the law enforcement partners, so the state's attorney's office, but also the public defender's office, and the crime victim advocates office, and the Washington County Mental Health, the Montpelier Business Community, the Montpelier Social and Economic Justice Community. You know, these, these kind of, of groups that are already established and, and, you know, seeking some of their input on that. And then the fourth thing I think is to review, you know, to review the data that they've talked about, about crime trends, department activity, race data, complaint resolution, major incidents, and analyze and provide, you know, some, some observations. Because I think you look at that data, and it's, it's very, you can draw some very clear and powerful conclusions, as we did last time. But it, it would be nice to have this, this committee be able to look deeper at some of that and look at it in the context of either the state or national. And then to review the functions and analyze the functions of the Montpelier Police Department as part of its current strategic plan, existing policies, and going forward. And then I would see, at least as a first phase, this coming to a report or some, some type of goal where we, we as a council would receive some of this the benefit of the work that we would expect this subcommittee to do. Maybe not in a form of, we recommend X, Y, and Z out of this, but just simply the, the fruit of this labor. And then, and included in that, you know, start to build some of the recommendations of where this committee would go forward from there. So that, that I guess is a little bit more expanded about where I think this subcommittee could go, and what I would see is a deeper dive looking like.
Yeah, thank you. Those all sound good to me. Cool, other thoughts on this? If there's no thoughts generally about this, then, oh, thumbs up, awesome, then I think it might make sense to start talking about some specifics. It sounds like people are generally on board with the idea of creating this board or committee, whatever you want to call it. And so that leads me to a couple of, really, it's actually a series of questions. So one question is, well, there's, and there's a number of ways to, to think about this. So one question would be, how many city councilors either should be on it or are interested in being on it? And could attack that a couple of ways. And then a second question is, either, how many other seats do we want to create for it? And then all, all of that is sort of in the context of, you know, do we want to set some kind of a size limit on the group? And to be fair, if we are creating this, then we can adjust that number anytime. But, you know, it, it could be good to have a goal, some kind of a goal there in, in mind. And then beyond that, just to clarify the, the process, and so this is how I understand that this would go. If we do have other, you know, stakeholders that we want to, to be there, I'm thinking of this process as similar to when we set up the homelessness task force, where we said, you know, we'd really like to have a seat at the table there for someone from the business community. And we'd really like, you know, representation there from someone who has the experience of being homeless. And, and I think we would probably want to do that here again. And, I mean, in the end, with the homelessness task force, we still put out a call and said, who's, who's out there that would like to participate? And then we, we made those appointments. So unless someone has other ideas as to how of the other stakeholder piece would go, that's how I'm envisioning it. Any other, Bill, is that how you're envisioning that part going, or, or Chief?
Yeah, but really, I, you know, we want to be careful not to be dictating who you put on, who you think is best to provide you the input that you need. But I, I had in mind that similar model of the homelessness task.
And then, you know, I, I think it's probably, when we get to the part of talking about stakeholders, I think it's worth having this consideration too, that Dan brought up about the, some of the different parties that are involved. It's worth considering the question, is, are, is this a person that is a stakeholder? And should be a part of decision-making, the decision-making process? Or is this the kind of position that we would want to invite in for some expertise, though they're not necessarily a stakeholder? So just want to be thoughtful about that. So I know I've said a whole bunch of things here. I'm happy to start with either what do we think the total size should be, or how many councilors should be on this? I mean, the initial proposal was that we have one from each district. Yeah, what's, anybody have thoughts on any of those pieces? Go ahead, Connor.
I, I mean, I'll just throw it out there, I think three is probably at least one too many councilors on this. You know, if we want this to be a process where, you know, we, we think we're engaging all the stakeholders, it's pretty close to a quorum three there, and I, I don't know if that might give the wrong impression. I could be convinced otherwise, but that's just my initial take on it.
Sure, fair. Lauren?
Yeah, I, I agree. I think probably two is a pretty good number, if we have two volunteers. Another way, I mean, I like the, really trying to think through a variety of stakeholder voices we want to include. Also wondering, I don't know that, I definitely don't want to slow anything down, but wondering if, if we're hiring creative discourse, if them giving us an idea, because I do think we have a tendency to think of the same kinds of people. And part of the process there is, that I know we'll go through with the social and economic justice is, you know, who are, what are the voices that are not often at these tables and the same people that are part of processes? So I just wanted to flag that that could be something they could maybe quickly and easily say, have you thought about including, and trying to, you know, have a seat for for certain voices? And, you know, and maybe it's, here are people that we definitely, you know, either groups or the, the types of expertise that we want to solicit. And I think that doesn't all need to be people with official, like, voting member seats, but just people that we're keeping on the list and inviting and. Keeping on the list and inviting and, you know, make sure people know that meetings are happening, so I I don't think they need to be. Um, you know, a huge voting group per se, but really thoughtful about how people are being engaged and invited.
Uh, Dan?
Um, so maybe to a few sort of overall thoughts, I I I mean. I think it's certainly fine if we have just two councillors, but if three wanted to volunteer, I wouldn't see that as a problem either, I I think this is a. A working committee, so the more hands to lift the the boat, the better, um. I also think that we have to think uh about. The difference in stakeholders that we would want at the. Committee table versus those we would want this committee to listen to. And when I was thinking about this initially, I was thinking, oh, you know, we probably want a want a representative of the um. Either a state's attorney's office or some some judicial arm of, you know, where law enforcement goes, and then I thought, no. You know, as long as that group is is heard from and and is, they may not. Necessarily want to be a decision maker, but I'm sure that they would want their feedback. As as part of this, and so I think we really have to think about, you know, who are the people? At the table and and in part, I I would, I would wanna keep this sort of membership. Open and not necessarily say, well, I want one person from a business community, I want one person from District One, I want one person who. You know, drives a yellow car, um. And more keeping in mind in general, when we start to look at who we would appoint to this. Committee, um, trying to have a balanced set of of uh of voices, um. And it would be driven, you know, frankly, this is a lot of work to ask anybody to do. Um, and and if we get people that are willing to do it, that that's. A primary qualification for being on the committee, um. So I think we have to, and and we have to keep it into a manageable group, if we get it too large. You know, if they're they're, you get beyond like ten people at a table, it gets really hard to schedule everyone to come to the meetings and. It gets hard for everybody to sort of talk at these at these meetings unless they run really long. Uh, or they're dominated by a a strong chair, so I think we have to keep it as a as a good. Sized working group, um, of people that are willing to sort of get their hands into some of these issues and start to have some of these conversations. Um, I als- you know, I also think that it's, um. It it is something where, you know, we keep it, you know, we may have people who represent, you know, somebody who's a a resident and a business owner, um. That may have, or, you know, is a crime victim and a business owner that may have a per- particular perspective. Um, and we wouldn't wanna necessarily have boxes that we wanna check off, um, as opposed to. Just letting people participate um that are willing to take the work on.
Fair enough. Uh, Donna, and then I have a thought, go ahead.
Uh, I a question procedurally, Mayor, are we actually trying to decide? In fine detail, are we just making general suggestions? So I'm just checking how long this conversation is gonna be, it's eight thirty. But, so these are suggestions we're gonna send the staff back to, or are we going to leave tonight with a very clear, we want this tonight?
I mean, my thought would be that we would leave this conversation with instructions to staff to say. Advertise for so many seats and. And I I feel like we're kind of at that question actually now, and then we'll be able to have the conversation. And and actually, to be fair, we we maybe don't have to have that conversation tonight about who from council is going to be um a part of it, um.
Okay, that's that's good, I just need to hear that, and I sort of go about the stakeholders. The ones at the table to be uh non-professionals, non-traditional stakeholders, community members who have a perspective. A different perspective about our police, the ones who are not normally at the table, but have very clear opinions. I really wanna see some gra- grassroots stakeholders and how can we get them here uh? To the table to talk, and then you bring in all the professionals, all the service groups as resources. Uh, so that's my bias, uh, that's all.
Fair enough.
Madam Mayor, if you will take an input on this topic?
Um, yes, uh, go ahead and and then I I've got a comment, go ahead.
Okay, uh, I think it's it's imperative that you consider the impact, the the informal community group of people who are speaking up. Uh, and insisting on changes to the way we allocate our money, we're in a financial crisis and a health crisis, and. If if we are going to reallocate resources, you can't. Use this committee process as a reason to defer that for another year or or fourteen months. If if we've got a, you know, a three million dollar department and we only need a million and a half dollar department, now's the time to be thinking about it, so we need. In a, in effect, to accelerate this process in time for budget discussions. And I don't know if that's possible, I I don't wanna be brash or unsafe, but. I I'm also willing to volunteer, cuz I'm a unique victim of uh. A victim of a crime by the police department, so I'm happy to bring uh. An enlightened perspective to this discussion, but I do want some urgency, the fact that you use the homelessness task force, which has existed for a year. And not even inventory bathrooms, showers, or hand washing, is an example of what I don't want this to become, you know?
Yeah, thank you, um, and so you raised a good point about how we'll be making decisions around um. On the budget, and my my assumption is that. Uh, at least for this year, um, it'll be the council that makes um. Budgetary decisions, un- unless the group is, you know, able to make um some quick decisions, um. In a short amount of time, otherwise, my assumption is that we will will have the the budget conversation at this level, um. Though we will, you know, particularly talk about that. Uh, all right, so, um. I think probably what makes the most sense, uh, well, what's making sense to me anyway, is that we. Mostly just decide on um roughly how many. Actually, maybe we don't even need to decide on number of seats, we can probably just say that there's a ballpark, and then. As we're, as we, you know, get names in, we can, um, we can make, we can make the size decision once we have names. Not necessarily once we have names, but, um, you know, we can. See what makes the most sense, because um, unless we are also deciding the number of councillors tonight, um, then. Um, I think it makes sense to do that sort of all at once, any any opposition to that idea? So, seems like we could probably just uh direct staff to um. To advertise for this. Uh, board.
I could offer a comment, I I think that's fine, um, as far as size goes, that's clear, you know, that makes sense. Um, if I were a a resident thinking of applying for the board, whatever clarity you wanna put in is to the. The purpose or goal or charge for the committee, I I realize it's gonna take some work, uh, so you might. But whenever you can say, I did write down some of the thing, you know, Dan's things, and we've got our list and. If you want me to just take a stab at synthesizing that, I can, but I just wanna, you know, be clear that I wanna make sure we reflect what you want.
Yeah, that list seemed like a a good list to me, I don't know if anyone has any other thoughts on the charge of the group? Um, as either in addition or subtraction of that list. Go ahead, Donna.
Well, I remember even with the homelessness, I think, you know, you can make a fairly broad. Charge, and then as the group meets and and they come back to us saying, this is what we think we we should be looking at for the next six months. Or whatever, um, so I don't think it has to be. Hugely detailed, but it has to be enough so people know whether they're interested in putting their time in, and whether it'll make a difference if they put their time in. I think it would be good to make it, uh.
Yeah.
Clear.
I think it might also be good to. At least specify, do like, do we think quarterly is? Um, sufficient now, or do we let that group decide, um, maybe they wanna meet more frequently, I don't know.
Yeah, and to be clear, the quarterly part was really for reviewing certain data. You know, I I mean, I think some of the other work. Might be, it was, I we were, I was thinking, you know, and the chief and I were thinking, once we get through some of the the first heavy lifting. The committee may evolve to a group that that now we've made some changes and they wanna look at the the trends in the data and. Talk and have a place to take complaints from the public or wha- whatever, um, but that. You know, uh, we weren't necessarily saying quarterly right from the gate on all these issues. Yeah, I I have a suggestion that might work, um. We'll take a stab at drafting a charge, I'll put it in the weekly memo this Friday so that you all and the public can see it. Um, and before we advertise it, and if people have objections, let me know, if I don't hear anything, we'll, or. Anything major, um, I'll go forward. Next week and we'll put the ad out.
Yeah, do you need, do you need a motion for that?
Wouldn't hurt.
Yeah. Is there a motion?
Sure, I'll make, I'll make a motion, um, that we direct staff um to create a charge based on. The um, the language that we have discussed in in this meeting, in in particular, I'll send Bill. Um, the written. Items that I had, I had itemized along with the contents of um the city manager's mayor memo. To the city council to develop a charge for a subcommittee on public safety, um. Authority, uh. With with a goal to advertise for potential public members. Some are convoluted, but I think it gets us there.
Okay, we, so one of the things that, oh, sorry, is there a second?
Second.
Okay, um, one of the things I wanna be. A little bit intentional about here is what we're calling it, and you you just called it a public safety authority.
Sorry, I meant advisory.
Um. Okay.
Be clear if we called it police, I mean, I, we suggested public safety thinking that over time. You know, might wanna look at fire department statistics too, but we do have the public safety authority and it could get confusing, so maybe. For now, the focus is on police, and we gotta just call it what it is, and that that was my bad, I was the one that said public safety.
How how do you feel about that? Uh, Dan and Jack, since you, that's okay?
Fine with me, I'm fine with it.
Okay, Donna, go ahead.
Well, just in the document, Brian uses a term in the very last, when it comes to city ordinances, he calls it a public safety advisory committee. And I didn't know if that was a different group, Bill, uh, Brian.
All meant to be the same, and Brian and I drafted this together, and if you go right back to the very beginning where it says committee. The the actual second paragraph, it calls it the public safety advisory committee, and again, I think we were thinking that over time. You know, people might wanna say, well, how's the fire department doing, but I think that's, they can, we can change to that, and we do have the public safety. Authority, so it might be clearer to make sure this is something different, so that that I should have thought of that, I'm sorry.
I was just unsure if it was another group, thank you, yeah, I think police is good.
Okay, any further discussion on this? Okay, uh, all in favor, please say aye.
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 And oppose. Okay. Uh, so, and Stephanie, I know you were interested in talking about that second part of the memo, um, I hope you hang in there, we're, I, we're gonna take a a quick break. Uh, and then we'll come back to that, um, part. Is that okay, team?
How long?
Oh, good question, let's go five minutes, is five, is five enough? Okay, we're we're gonna aim for five.
Well, you're the boss, so we have to wait for you anyway.
Okay, no, thanks, I mean, you could, you could carry on. Um, all right, so, um, all right, so just uh taking up specifically the second part of that memo. Um, that addressed um some of the requests that we got, um. So, I think to start this, um, Stephanie, since you wanted to talk about that, would you like to start?
Sure. And hopefully you'll excuse the toddler squeals, he is a late nighter. Um, well, first of all, I agree with Donna on who should be on the subcommittee in terms of not law enforcement, I think it should be community members. Who represent a perspective that's not already there, it just seems like if we be, if that group would be coming together to talk about new solutions to change the future of policing. It wouldn't be appropriate to have law enforcement on there, that would make it feel, to me, and I think to other members of the community, like it was. Um, sabotaging the effort from the get-go and just making it into an empty gesture, so I'm I'm glad that Donna said that. Um, my other comments were about the rest of the memo, um. It makes it feel like a lot of our demands have been dismissed as not being, um, and I quote, directly related to inherent bias concerns. And the thing is, none of the residents in the community were, that you're referring to here, actually said that this was about bias. The whole point of systemic racism is that it's inherent in these systems we're discussing, even in the absence of any bias in a particular individual. So, um, that's what many of us had been trying to convey, I had at least. And I was discouraged by the fact that it seems like you're ruling out taking action on things. Because they don't relate to bias, again in quotes, when that's not even what people were asking you to address in the first place. I plan to email a response to all of the responses, but um, right here, I just thought I'd address one in particular. Um, you're right, the budget is the most substantive issue, but it's not everything, I wanted to talk about something that seems to be a glaring example of how something doesn't need to be about bias. In order to be about systemic racism and other big problems, and how something that doesn't seem like it's about policing actually is, and that was the item about, um. Banning the use of prisoner labor by the city and ending all contracts with corrections. So, um, I just wanna read this for anyone who doesn't have it in front of them. Uh, you had said, this is not about police or bias, the only use of corrections crews is by the cemetery for lawn mowing and grounds maintenance. This particular work crew is made up of volunteer inmates who are able to reduce their sentences by performing the services. So, first of all, I wanna say this is about police and bias, because how do you think these people got to prison in the first place if not for police? And, um, if not for bias, that potentially affected the course of their sentencing. So all of this is connected, which I've been trying to get across, and I know others have been as well. Anyway, regardless, I just want everyone to think more about this, because I don't want it to be something that's dismissed. In regards to this particular crew of volunteer inmates. First of all, volunteer, I don't know, um, if your offense is considered mild enough that doing some lawn work might reduce your sentence, you're in a situation where you're buying your freedom by working. So instead of supporting our local economy by paying an individual or a company to do this work, who would then go out? And spend their money in the community, we're paying a literal prison, and we're supporting modern day. Well, you're literally supporting modern day slavery to maintain the grounds of the cemetery, and for what? I mean, don't we care about who the city? Business of, I was thinking about how like cosmetics companies garner support and goodwill by refusing to test their products on animals. And shouldn't we be able to proudly state that Montpelier uncategorically does not employ prisoners, period, not now and not ever? It doesn't matter who this particular work crew is or why they're in prison, what matters is that Montpelier no longer participates in the prison industrial complex for something. Like, it can pay someone else to do, a local company that employs people for fair pay who live within the community and not behind bars. So, yeah, that this is just one of the eleven demands that we're discuss- discussing and that you addressed here, but. I wanted to highlight it, cuz it's something we can't so easily dismiss. Uh, I I just think it's indicative of a larger problem that I and others have been bringing here, and. Um, it's really disappointing to see it kind of, well, again, dismissed as not being part of whatever this problem is, which. By the way, isn't the problem we were presenting. Uh, so that's that's basically my comments, but I do wanna encourage you to think about that.
Yeah.
First of all, I'm sorry if you felt dismissed, Stephanie, um. We were just trying to figure out, so if we misinterpreted your statements about. This being about systemic racism or inherent bias, and I apologize for that, that appeared to me at least, and I think. Many of us on staff, that that was the message, so we were just trying to parse which of these were directly related to that and which weren't. Um, and with regard to the the cemetery here, you point loud and clear, I guess, for just a another, you know. Our police certainly don't arrest people just so that we can have people that mow the cemetery, and. Here, here, the point loud and clear, we could be paying somebody else to do that, um, it's also a case of, you know. And I completely agree with you, by the way, about the prison industrial complex and all of that, fairness and sentencing, we unfortunately. Don't really have anything to do with that, and if there are prisoners that can reduce their time. Um, and when I say volunteer, they they choose, they can, I, you're right, they're in prison, but they're not made to do this, they. Say we'd like to be part of this crew because they can reduce their time. Uh, and so is there a social good there, if there are people to be coming back to society? Uh, and so is there a social good there if if there are people to be coming back to society and learning work skills? That said, the other piece of this is that the cemetery commission is actually a some a separate independent body from the city council. So while we work very cooperatively with them. That's actually a decision that cemetery commission is gonna have to make, and I probably should have been more explicit about that in the memo. I do know they're taking it up. I don't know the exact date, but I was told that it's on one of their upcoming agendas, so. Be tuned.
Other thoughts or comments? Um, I, I would just say, um. Uh, Stephanie, I also, like when I, just in reading through that, um, there were, there were some parts that started like, you know, this is not related to bias and I I will confess, I. I had a similar reaction in that I was like, well, it could be, you know, like it's maybe not like directly related, but it's, you know, but. I mean, I I live in a world where like, I mean, I teach physics, right? Like I think about how like everything is physics. It all, it all relates and and, you know, maybe that's not a great analogy, but like. It certainly, it certainly relates, um, even if it's not, um, direct. Um, and. You know, for any one of those, um, items, like happy to have more conversation about those. And to be fair. Um, you know, the entity that we just created would probably be a good place to start, but even in the interim. You know, I'm happy to talk about. What any of those um, could look like. So, um, in any case, uh. Thank you. And um, any other comments? Well, Lauren, go ahead. And then Jack.
Yeah, I mean, I was just gonna echo, I I kind of had a. Similar reaction, like it it felt a little disjointed to me to, on the one hand, be like, let's create a group that can like dig in and on the other, let's already answer a bunch of questions that I think. Do bear further conversation and, um. You know, so I I don't want to approach this. Committee and, you know, assume that a bunch of issues have already been dealt with and answered and checked off the list and. Um, you know, dismissed out of hand, but more like, okay, let's have these on the table. Let's see what other issues are coming up from community members and stakeholders. Um, and, you know, so I hope we can really start it off with a. Inclusive process that is really hearing from each other and digging into, you know, why were these issues raised? What else is missing? You know, how how do we move forward? Um, and I think part of that is, again, is gonna be. Some work on, you know, what are, I think, shared values and vision and there's. I'm hoping short term ideas and recommendations and then longer term, um, ideas and recommendations. Um, so that's, that's my hope.
Thanks, Jack.
Just very briefly, I read, I thought that the memo from the chief and the manager was. A constructive contribution to the discussion and. What I see them doing here is for some of the issues that were raised to try to respond. As readily as they could to issues that they, uh. They could have a straightforward response to. I also think though that. It's very clear that the the new police advisory committee that we're establishing. Is gonna have a. A broad scope of activity and and the fact that the. Uh, city manager, the police chief. Has one opinion on a topic does not foreclose further discussion or or disagreement. So I'm. I'm not worried about the the commission. Being unduly constrained in, uh, in what it takes up.
Yeah, I I want to add to, uh, what I was saying before as well, I, because I agree, it was, it it was helpful. Um. So I think it's, uh, it's important to know sort of what the background is for for some of those, um, topics and requests. So. Um, yeah, so grateful. Um, Donna.
Well, I appreciated the list and maybe I was just sensitive, but I found the tone just condescending. I just really did. I mean, I mean, to a list that there were eleven requests, I mean, I felt, would you normally say that? Um, so I I think we we need to look at that seriously and try to. Get away from it if possible. And it's hard. It's hard for all of us, um. When we're looking at what we see and what we understand. And that's part of the hard work we're all doing now. So please take the criticism as I intended it. It's not something I don't do myself. So. Just keep it in mind when you're writing.
Well, I appreciate that. And I want to be really clear, um, that I was the drafter of this. You know, Brian had provided me the feedback, so if. I just don't want him to take the the fall for this, that, um, the the words were mine. And that, uh, certainly. You know, it's interesting actually, looking at it, again, I can see the point, you know, where we were trying to be sort of, I was trying to be sort of matter of fact. Um, and I can see why people would object to that. And I think to to just to explain. Um, and and certainly I'm happy to acknowledge if if I fell down anywhere was. To try to respond to what we know factually, you know, to me, there's a lot of really interesting policy discussions here. And to the extent that, and and I don't want to, you know, certainly can't speak for the the group, but that some of the issues. Which may have a legal obstacle or, you know, in my view, at least, you know, pay pay adjustments for police officers, those kind of things. You know, that is separate from the size of the police department and the functions and all those kinds of things. And so it was, so how do we, how do we focus? And you know, the eleven, I mean, they gave us a list and they said, we have eleven demands. I wasn't trying to. Be pejorative about that. That was how it was presented to us, is we respond to them similarly to the, you know, we'd had eight. Before and we were, I responded to those in the bridge, I think. So, uh, you know, my, I I think I was like, where can we really, where's the room for really? Constructive conversation that can move this forward and where is stuff that, you know, is, and and I appreciated Stephanie's comment, you know, there may be more nuance there than I was. Giving it credit for, and that's on me, so.
No worries. Thank you.
Mayor, I have a comment.
Uh, yeah, go ahead, Stephen.
Uh, the, I want to just use an example of this inherent bias, um, the. There's no one but Billy, no one but a homeless person would the, would the officer steal their unopened beers? I mean, there's, I I mentioned this three times now, there's no evidentiary value to an unopened beer that a homeless person spent, you know, precious. Nickel cans collecting, you know? So the treatment, uh, I know the treatment I get when I drive a newer car for than when I drive an older car. Uh, and I watch the the disparity of treatment of how this community, despite its, you know, self. Uh, perception of progressive liberal, you know, compassionate. Has has neglected, you know, toilets for old people and homeless people for over a year. So the the bias is is inherent in the in the system and. While I don't, I wouldn't come at, uh, my petition for change with. Uh, a list of demands because I'm likely to not get them met and then they weren't really that demanding. Um, maybe it's a bad core choice of words, but when you're going up against the power of incumbency. You know, a sophisticated hundred thirty thousand dollar a year of city manager who, you know, is expert at at, you know, manipulating information, you know, you've got to. You've got to learn and we have to basically build the capacity among our citizens to hold our officials accountable. And that's what I see going on here. So I I I would ask you to consider those as legitimizing some of the. Requests and the the, uh. Direction that you're hearing from this emerging citizens group. So. I'll leave it at that.
Okay, thank you. Okay, um. All right, I think we're probably ready to move on unless other, anyone else wants to. Uh, address this topic. Chief Pete, would you like to talk about this at all?
Uh, no, uh, well, just good evening. I just didn't want to, I just wanted to give everybody just to say hello and, uh. And thank everybody for the constructive, uh, for the dialogue and and, uh. And and for everything. And I, please forgive me, I got a little science headache going on. It's not COVID. Um, but I just, all I ask is as we, as we move, I I consider myself a very reasonable person. Um, and with that, I'm just asking that as we move forward. And in 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 working with the community, that. We're talking and we have constructive dialogue together. You can't make decisions about like, for example, in NAMI, one of the biggest things in mental health. Is, you know, don't know conversations about us without us. And 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 we're talking about an institution wise thing. Everybody needs to be respected. Everybody needs to be heard, but everybody needs to be constructive in the conversation. So I just want to make sure. That I listen to anybody, I can learn from everyone. But as we, as we move forward with the with the group, I'm just hoping for people who are open minded. And who want to learn as much from me and my experiences as I can learn from them and their experiences. And that the the concept is that we work together to strengthen something. Um, and and that that's my only hope and my only ask for this. And thank you all very much for your time.
Thank you. And, um, I agree. I think that is gonna be an important quality. For anybody who participates in that committee. Uh, okay, and just to clarify, um, one of the comments that Stephanie made was about Donna's comment about. Staff participation and I I mean, my assumption is that. Uh, this committee that we've, that we're, that we've asked, um, staff to create will be staffed. Um, and I think, you know, in that same spirit, I know that was not, um. Something that, uh, you know, Stephanie just articulated. Support for, but I I think it makes sense actually to have, um, participation of, um, well, that that whoever staffs it from the city be. Um, police officer and probably in the chief. Um, but of course, that's, that's your, your decision, um, as, uh, staff folk.
Oh, humbly, ma'am, I'm just, I'm looking for just folks who are just gonna volunteer to work with me. I I have, I I I I look at it as a, as a team of community members who are going to. Provide impact and help us to see. And find out different ways that we can address the needs that we that we need to address going into. You know, our our next few years. So it it's, I'm just, I'm looking for a partnership team. Um, that can help me. So like for one of the things, for example, is if we're talking about how do we improve minority and diversity recruitment. You know, it it would make sense to me to say, if if I've got a very robust relationship with. With members of the LGBTQ community, how can I reach out and 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 how, what are the things that I need to do? And to show that we're very open force and that we want to have people, you know, how do we, how do we appeal? What are we missing? Because we can't see the the forest from when we're living in the trees. So I'm just looking for that, that partnership and groups that are gonna help us. To provide safety, um, for the city and that we make sure that we do it in a very fair, um. And a fair way for everyone.
Yeah. Any further comments on that part?
I mean, Madam Mayor, briefly on this, on this staffing issue, I just want to recount. Before I resigned from the homelessness task force, it was due to the staffing basically suppressing ideas before they were allowed to develop. The idea of sanctioned camping areas that are sorely needed by the unhoused. So they don't have. The police don't have the free right to just roust them and move them along at whim. You know, in a discriminatory manner, even the people that aren't making trouble. So the idea of having staff. Has to be limited to a non intrusive, to keeping notes, not basically. Prejudging what will and won't fly and suppressing it. That's, that's what killed the homelessness task force effectiveness, in my opinion. So just a note of caution here that what I hear Chief Pete's idea of what this is, is to advise him on how to do it. But I believe there's a need for a broader discussion on what is our expected role and how might it need to be changed? So. Uh, that's a caution on staffing and I'll call it a night.
Okay, thank you, Stephen. Okay, um, I think we're probably good to move on. Any further comments? Okay, um, all right, so we are up to our COVID nineteen update. And so for this, I would turn it over to Cameron.
Hello, um, let me pull these up because I have also combined, uh, resuming, um, meetings in person, a new. Uh, recommendation for you. So. In general, um, this was a pretty, uh, busy COVID month since we last met. I'll just briefly go over a few things that I think will be important to call out for folks in the community. Um, the ACCD Recovery Resource Center has a link, um, to help landlords and property owners repair. Um, homes and rental units, up to thirty thousand dollars, uh, in grant funds are available. To make sure that, um, the housing availability in Vermont is of quality and is affordable and available to all. There is a new capital equipment assistance program open for applications for. Um, farmers to get new equipment for nutrition management planning. That's at the Department of Agriculture and is open now. The ACCD has updated their current restaurant and lodging guidance. So restaurants and bars can now use bar seating if patrons are six feet apart and there's a partition between the bar and the bartender. Um, the capacity limits for restaurants have not changed, just that bars are open. ACCD also removed capacity limits from all lodging properties like hotels, allowing them to book all of their available rooms if they want to. Um, there is now also, uh, free technical assistance available through the Small Business Recovery Technical Assistance Program. Um, to help folks, um, get some new resources and that's also through ACCD. The schools had some significant updates this week too. Um, I thought I would start including that because that has been a focus of our. Uh, the governor's press conferences. They have moved to a step three opening plan starting. This Sat- Saturday, September twenty sixth. This means, uh, that they will allow interscholastic competitions for their sports. Events and programs. They can consider the use of common areas like gyms and cafeterias. And, um, allows the schools more flexibility in grouping students outside of the pod model they were using before. So I would direct folks to the, um, education department's website. And then also know that our travel map for the state is now going to be updated on Tuesdays instead of Fridays. And our city communications also remains very high in engagement. And we are, um, as you heard earlier with our winter. Programming, uh, discussion or winter parking discussion, looking at different ways to communicate with the public. So. That is my COVID update. Does anyone have any questions on that part?
It's just great news. Um, kids are psyched to be able to play interscholastic sports. Uh, yeah. Go ahead, Donna.
Um, I had a, um, two residents asked me if pickleball is going to be started in the rec department. So I read what was listed. I didn't see it. So if I don't see it specifically listed, it's not restarted?
No, we, I didn't include any of our rec updates right now. Um, we will, we are working on getting the website more up to date. Um, we're still not opening this, the rec center for games inside, but pickleball is still welcome and open on all of our tennis courts right now. So folks are able to play at their own risk on our tennis courts. All the stuff for pickleball is there, but we're still not opening up the rec center.
Yeah, they were, they were looking for insight. Thank you very much.
So I will move into, um, the next bit, which is the resuming in person. Uh, city council meetings. Um, we had a really great discussion last time about that and there was a really great idea brought up. About opening up, um, council chambers for the public to use. That gives a nice space where people can come in and and be in city hall and opening si- the council chamber up. So that it could be its own sort of zoom station. So if y'all don't want to be there, you do not have to be there. We would sort of let anyone be in our space in the city council chamber. Um, we have an extra laptop in there for the, for that room. It's been in there. Um, so we can set that up as its own zoom portal. So folks can interact if they want to speak to y'all. Um, they can walk up to that computer, interact with that computer. Without any touching or or anything like that. Because, you know, the distance on a laptop is pretty great. You can sit pretty far back from it. And so. Um, anyone would be able to be a participant on a zoom platform. While still maintaining social distance and being in the council chambers. So. That's what I would recommend. That's the staff recommendation. I also included the other proposals for in person. Configurations. There is, um. Configurations, there is, um, a fiscal, uh, component to that because we would need to outfit the council chambers a little bit, but. Um, the good news is those grants have been extended until October one, so if that is your choice and you want to move forward with that, we can, we can still. Apply for, um, uh, getting funding for things like a plexiglass barrier.
So. I have two thoughts on this, so one is that, um. At some point, we are going to go back to being in person. And it would probably make some sense to figure out which path we want to pursue. And if, if it means that we need to apply for funding to pay for things like plexiglass, then we should, we should do that. My second thought is that. Just by choosing the path doesn't mean that we have to go back right now, if that's not. What we feel is right for this, you know, for this moment, if it's not imminent, that's okay. So there's, I, I, again, so I, I see this as like two separate questions. Are we ready to, to pursue any one of these now? And then second one being like, which, which option do we like? Um, so curious for your thoughts, team. Go ahead, Jack.
I have a question, and I don't know if this is even feasible, but. If we set up plexiglass barriers between each pair of seats on the dais. Are we still required to maintain six feet of interpersonal distance, physical distance?
I think that's recommended, um, it is a barrier, just like a mask is a barrier, but it's a barrier and, right? So, um. I would, I would recommend the plexiglass and masks if you wanted to go down that road. I think that that would probably reduce the risk of the six foot transmission, but. That, I mean, I guess it's really up to y'all's comfort level because it's all suggestions anyway.
Thanks.
I think there's an issue, right, the plexiglass would go as far back as the desk goes, but the chairs go further back and you've got a neighbor.
Yeah, that's fair.
I think depend, like, I, I guess to interject, the recommendation, the first recommendation of. Allowing in-person meeting space available for the public, we've talked internally and the staff that stays here. Um, is comfortable with that, um, level of engagement with the community. Um, we feel like we have pretty strong, um, you know, PPE protection here, we've got really great cleaning procedures in place. And so regardless on if y'all would like to be physically here, I would like to be able to set that up for the public regardless. If that is okay with you as a whole, uh, because I, you know, I did, we did hear a lot about how that impacts folks last time, we talked about this. And I think it would be important to offer that as an option.
Uh, Laura and then Dan.
Um, yeah, I, I really like the idea and appreciate the, you know, um, working to set up a, a station and even having the building open one evening a week. Seems, seems like a great idea, um, I mean, I think it's to Ann's point, is there, is there a downside? Or what kind of cost share is there for the grant? I mean, it does seem like, you know, there's so many unknowns about how long this will go on, so having that available for, for this purpose, or even if it could be. You know, other city purposes, um, at some point, if it's a resource we can get grant funding for now, should we just apply?
You mean the plexiglass?
Yeah.
Okay.
If it's just literally plexiglass or if there's any, anything more, but.
Not really, no, the, the plexiglass that we've gotten, it's just that, it's, they set it up so that it can like rest on either side of a desk, and they just set it up that way. So they've done it for the rest of our desks, so. That's something we can explore, um, and we'll, we'll look into that, I, I don't see any reason not to.
And I think either way, the, um, setting up the community opportunity seems like a great. Thing in the short term to get going.
Madam Mayor, I've got a comment on this.
Um, yeah, uh, Dan's next, and then you can go after Dan.
Sure.
Okay, um, is, we talked last time about, um, alternative spaces, and I'm thinking in particular the, um. The stage space upstairs on the second floor, um, it, one of the limitations seemed to be Orca. And whether or not they could run lines up there or cameras, um, was that looked into at all?
I have not spoken to Orca.
Okay, it just, I mean, I think that's, it strikes me that, you know, we can try and retrofit the council chambers. As a safe space, but there are inherent limitations, as you've very well outlined, Cameron, in your, your memos that. You know, we, we're basically putting Band-Aids on this, trying to make it work. As opposed to exploring other potential spaces that have a broader, you know, just thinking, there's a way to socially distance upstairs in the, uh. Uh, you know, in the, the Lost Nation space and the voting space because it's a big wide open. Uh, you know, half court gymnasium. Um, or, I mean, there's, there are other spaces like that around town if we wanted to really explore. Those opportunities, um, and it, it strikes me that those might be more. Offer more flexibility overall, it's just whether or not, um, you know, they would, they would have inherent limitations like filming. That would make it, make it a limitation on us, but I, I'd like to explore, I'd like to see that explored. Um, as, as another space where we could sort of break out of the limitations that we're just going to face, no matter which way we turn it. In the council chambers for the time being.
I'll talk to Orca.
Cool, uh, Stephen, go ahead.
Uh, so I'm aware that Orca has a box, a, a streaming box that's portable, and if they can get an ethernet connection, they can. It, it, it won't be the old high resolution, uh, signal that they normally get out of the city council chamber. It'll be streaming only, but so is Zoom, so it's not a lot lost. But I would encourage you to start with the city council chamber and get that set up. I did mention last time, you need to think about ventilation in any space, even the large space. You need to think about heat recovery ventilation because it's the, the, the aerosol, uh, partners of a protected. Particles of a protection, potentially infected person that is going to be the hazard. And the energy grant that we talked about, or that was available or made a presentation, and or other state funding. You could exhaust the city council chamber effectively through the side windows and recover the heat from the outgoing. Uh, but that needs to be planned and engineered quicker, but. I would suggest that you proceed, also because you're talking about moving the pocket park, you're talking about bathrooms, you're talking about winter and camping areas. There's a disenfranchised population here that is routinely ignored, that they need a place to come in and make themselves heard. I've been talking to them, but they don't feel like they have a voice, they don't have phones, they don't have Zoom installed on laptops. So if they, if you really want to take some of these issues seriously and hear from the affected people, you need to make a place where they can participate. So, uh, those are some ideas, I would not wait, I would move forward with the city council, I applaud, uh, the work that was done on. Thinking about that, get started on the ventilation issue. And then maybe as a phase two, if you overcrowd the city council chamber, which is, I believe is unlikely, uh, then you could move upstairs into a bigger room. I'll leave it there, thanks.
Thank you. Uh, Jack.
Would it be, uh, an appropriate time to, uh, make a motion? Uh, and I'll, I'll make the motion, I'll see if there's a second, I move that we direct the city staff to, uh. Proceed with, uh. Proposal one, to, as a first step, open up the city council chambers for, uh, for public participation in our meetings. While we're addressing the other issues we need to address.
I'll second that.
Okay, uh, any further discussion on the motion? Go ahead, Dan.
What you meant by one and two?
I think it was just on mo- on proposal one, to do something. The two was like TO, not the number two.
Okay, proposal one is, is in-person meeting space made available for the public in council?
I understood the one, I just didn't understand the TOO, thank you.
TOO.
To, um, Jack, did you have something else you want to add to that?
Well, yeah, I also agree with Dan that I'd like to see us explore if we can. Set up council ma- uh, meetings for in-person meetings in the auditorium space, we can space it out so we can be, all be six feet apart. That's, that takes some more doing, but, uh, so that's not part of my motion, except that I think the. Uh, staff are probably getting a sense that at least some of us are interested in exploring that.
That seems fair, and I, um, you know, I, we're going to vote on this motion, but, um, I think another part of this is. Considering whether or not we move forward with plexiglass so that we have it and we need it, unless, unless you don't need a motion around that. Doesn't hurt.
We'll look into it, um, I would say it requires upfront capital, it's a reimbursement grant only, so we'll, we will just look into that as an option.
Okay.
Seriously, and then we will also, uh, look about how we can configure upstairs if that's an option.
Okay, uh, Donna.
Well, when you're indoors, ventilation is as important as the six feet apart. So I would like for the staff to look at what kind of ventilation improvements would be needed, whether it's in the, the lower council chambers or upstairs in the auditorium. Even though it's big, it's still not well ventilated, they sealed all those windows for winter savings, um. So I, I, you know, I have lots of anxiety about going inside in the fall and the winter. I think that it's wonderful that people are having sports and we're not having the bars open, but to me, that just means a likelihood of another breakout. So I'm sort of in a wait and watch mode, but I'm concerned about the ventilation, so if you check that, that'd be good.
If I might add to that, I mean, I, this might be inherent in your request, Donna, but, um, I think if it is separate, is the filtration. Um, making sure that the filtration is.
And I want senior center about a few standalone, um. Filtration systems, so we do have a price that we can look at for that as well. Um, so we will look into that as well.
Okay, great. Okay, well, there's a motion on the table, uh, any further discussions, this is about opening council chambers up to the public.
Go ahead.
Oh, yes, Dan.
Sorry, just one clarification, I mean, I, I guess, in looking at the space, I, I wouldn't, and I wouldn't understand this motion have to be changed for that, but I would. I would assume that there would be an ability to, to look beyond, I mean, I suggested the upstairs, but. You know, there's a number of large public spaces in town, there's the auditorium at the basement of the pavilion. Whether or not the state would ever let us in there is a, is another question, but, um, you know, there are various churches and. Um, you know, there's city center itself, and the question, you know, I think we have to think outside of the box on some of this stuff, and if it was available or. Applicable, um, but I would understand that that, that would be part of what the staff would necessarily need a motion, but can simply look into some of those ideas as well.
I'll look into it.
Um, Heather, did you, you just turned your camera on, would you like to say something?
Yes, sorry, I got lost a little bit, so the meetings would still be available for the public through Zoom too?
Yes.
And as under the staff's proposal, council members would still, at this point, be participating by Zoom. And the, it's a proposal to open up council chambers so people who want to come in, in person to be, to speak to the council, but don't have. The ability to log on themselves would have that as a way to address the council.
Um, Donna, I saw you had a hand.
Well, just to follow up, Dan's proceeding to look elsewhere, I would want the staff to consider it and give us an idea. What is the inconvenience of us not being in that building? Staff goes to their offices or waits in their offices or copies things, I just would want a mindset of how inconvenient. To have council meetings outside of the building would be for staff, you just have that in your mindset. Thank you.
We also assume that other places would require rental fee.
Yeah.
So go ahead, yeah.
Yeah, no, I, I mean, I, I, I think that's all fitting into the, the feasibility is just, you know, because we're looking at these two different options, I wouldn't want. You know, because I, I, you know, just if there was a facility that said, sure, you're welcome to use it, and it did fit our needs. Well, I wouldn't want to avoid, have, have looked so narrowly that we missed looking at that other available space, but. All of these, none of these are perfect, it would be great to go turn back the clock to January and go back to council chambers and all sit around and eat Twizzlers, but. You know, that's not where we're at right now.
I should probably throw away the Twizzlers that are in that.
I didn't get any Twizzlers, who passed those around?
I, I, I did, I didn't pass them around, I have.
Chocolate.
It lasts forever.
Yeah.
Okay, uh, all right, so there's a motion and a second, any further discussion? Okay, all unfair to say aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, and opposed? Okay, and, uh, so the last item for regular business is.
Mayor.
Uh, oh, yes.
Be, before we get off the COVID report and COVID topic, um. I, I heard the assistant city manager say that there's, uh, there's funding available to municipalities. To make COVID related, um. Expenditures of various kinds, and that gets me, that I immediately thought of. Whether, you know, we've been hearing suggestions for. Even at night, opening up the, uh, downstairs bathroom rooms for people to come in and use them, and I think that that's been. The reaction has been that that seems to be impractical because, and probably because of, uh. Security and needs to, uh, isolate the bathrooms and, and the, uh. Stairwell and, uh, vestibule from the rest of the building, and so I just wonder, is it possible to. Look at what physical changes would be needed and whether that's something that, uh, we could get. Reimbursed from the federal, uh, cover COVID relief funds to do.
Well, I will say that, um, Juan, thank you, that proposal is going to be on my next, uh, the October fourteenth agenda. Regarding the, the bathroom update, we are looking into that, how much that would cost. I would need to do more research if that was a refundable cost. They aren't necessarily doing tangentially related costs, we could loosely say that because some other bathrooms have been closed, we need more bathroom facilities. But I'm not sure if that would be something that they would reimburse, and we might be on the hook for the funding. So I would need to look into that and ask, um, our, uh. Some of our, our agencies that have been helping us with this, its funding, um, and these grants, to ask them if they think that's something that would go through, so. I'm not sure, and we will look into it.
Oh, man, we're just in sync, aren't we?
Okay. All right, um, okay, so, uh, the last item is looking at the calendar for, uh, the next couple of months. As some of the days fall on, uh, holidays, so. Um, I don't think we need to change anything in. October. Is that?
Yeah, we would, we'd make a very impassioned request that we don't change the October fourteen date, we just have a lot of things already teed up for that. Um, you know, after that, we've got more flexibility, but, um. Keep the fourteenth, I think the key, so there's, there's three dates that are really problematic, uh, specifically problematic. One is November eleven, which is the, would normally be our first. One is November eleven, which is the would normally be our first uh, November meeting and that falls on Veterans Day, we always have a meeting right around then, but it's either the day before, but this you know, it actually falls on the holiday. And we could still meet if we wanted, but you know, there there's that. The second November meeting is would be the twenty-fifth, which is the night before Thanksgiving, and that's a that's been an annual conflict that comes up because we meet the fourth week and that's always and so typically we've just moved that to the third week. Um, you know, I think way back, we sometimes would move it from Wednesday to Monday, but the last several years, we've just met what would be the eighteenth this year, but as Jack correctly pointed out, uh, not only is the eleventh a holiday, but then that's two weeks in a row. And then we have a similar issue, the fourth week of December where we would be scheduled to meet the twenty-third, which is Festivus, but um, technically isn't conflicted with the Christmas holiday. But it certainly is close enough, I think, for a lot of people, certainly members of the public and others that might be traveling or or whatever. Uh, and again, we have in the years past moved that meeting as well to the week before, so that would be the sixteenth, um. And I just say, you know, once we get into December, particularly this year, um, you know, we may need, you know, budget may be a lot more complex this year than it's been in prior years, so we may need to meet weekly anyway, or have have an extra meeting in there, I hope not, but I think that's probably the reality. Um, so, you know, I I don't know, but tho- those are the, so the December twenty-third, November twenty-fifth and November eleventh are very specific conflicts with holidays. And how you wanna move it after that. Um, I will note that, not that this is a big deal for us, um, but the first and third weeks are typically the school board weeks, so for people who are trying to follow both, I see Delkor on the line and uh, others, but you know, the press and the public that wanna participate with both groups, that is a conflict, so we've we've tried to work around it, obviously occasionally it happens and there's that, so that's what I have to say, you can schedule your meetings when you want, we'll be here.
Um, Jack, you had a proposal about this, um, at a previous meeting, do you wanna talk about? Well, um, your your thoughts on it?
I did, and my proposal in started out by doing, uh, but for one thing, uh, covering October two, the theory being that that by starting in October, that's the way to keep us two weeks apart for almost all of these meetings, um. But I hear what the manager said about specifically not screwing up with things, screwing things up that we already have, uh, have scheduled, um. So, I'm happy to have us meet whenever Bill thinks we should meet.
Oh, I I would propose, uh, for just November meeting on the first and third so that we avoid Veterans Day and the day before Thanksgiving, and I know that that puts us on the same night as school board, but you know, that that kind of thing is actually pretty normal for this time of year, um, so, you know, it just happens, um. So that's one part of it, and then, and actually, uh, for December, um, the sixteenth is actually also the sixth day of Hanukkah, um, so nah, either like I I think it'd be better if we could, um, move it to like, well, I guess my proposal would be that we move it to the second and the ninth. Um, I realize that's two weeks in a row, um, but that also allows us time, like if we decided that we did, we, you know, urgently needed to meet, um, more, uh, because it's a complicated budget that that gives us a little more flexibility with the later part of December, potentially, um. Other thoughts, I mean, and this doesn't have to be what we do, that's just, I'll put it out there, what do you think?
Uh, that's that's fine with me too. So before eighteen, two and nine. Theory, we wouldn't meet again and from between December nine and January six.
No way.
We January, yeah, January, well, January thirteen, but technically, right, but we almost always, and if we follow this schedule, we almost certainly will need budget meetings at the beginning of January.
Fair enough.
But but we do possibilities of the twenty-ninth and thirtieth in December if we had to.
Oh, during the holiday week?
Yeah, I mean, if we had to do a special, I I'm not wanting it, I'm just saying if we add a a real demand and that's not in anyone's holiday.
Less traveling this year than in most years. I mean, that is a good point and so maybe we'll just take stock on the ninth and see where we are and what we need to do, um. You're right, I mean, there may be less traveling and we're doing things remotely, I mean, I go, it would be somebody coming in here, but I mean, for council members, even if for most of us, even if we were traveling, maybe we could still participate, I it it, it's gonna be, if we have to meet, then it's gonna be a heavy lifting meeting, I think that's the thing, it will be a budget meeting, it shouldn't be, you know, we won't be for some little thing, it would be important, I mean, not they're not all important, but.
Are you gonna end up adding some extra in January to make us pay for some time off?
Well, you know, it's not me. How fast you get through the budget, I as far as I'm concerned, if we don't meet till from Jan- December nine to January thirteen, I'm sure the staff would love it, I'll, you know, if you can all, if we can present you a budget on the ninth and you can approve it on the thirteenth, then with a month in between to, yeah, good, but I I I don't think we'll be able to do that, and I don't think we'll really be on target to, you know, the night that meeting is usually when we present the budget, the first the second Tuesday in December, that's usually when we have it ready and I don't think we'll be, I I, I mean, I can talk to Kelly, but I don't think we'll have it ready for the second, especially with the the holiday right before that.
Good, Donna.
But there's also another meeting we usually change about the timing with, um, the ballot and Thursday, so if you could pick that out earlier, that would be good.
Yeah, so this year, actually, so that's interesting too, so that's a good point. I'm glad you reminded me of that, Donna, the way the calendar falls this year, the deadline for us to have the budget and the ballot is actually Thursday, January twenty-one.
Whoa.
Which is the third week, cause cause town meeting this year is like the second or or first, the second of March, so it's early.
Sorry, can you say that again, when is it?
A forty-day deadline for us to have stuff on the ballot is Thursday, January twenty-one. So the our last meeting, January twenty-seven, would be too late. So, we'd have to have our normal Thursday night meeting to get all the petitions and all that in, it'd have to be on the twenty-first.
So we should put that in our calendars now, anyway.
Yes, so then we can decide, you know, maybe we'll skip the last one in January if necessary, but we certainly would be
Okay.
You wouldn't like a little buffer, make it on Wednesday, the twentieth?
Well, we could, to the, so the problem with that is, here's the issue that we run into, and and again, this is all your decision, but the dead, the same legal deadline for us filing our ballot and finalizing the warning is also the legal deadline for people that are submitting petitions.
Oh, right, 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 yeah.
So, we could meet on Wednesday, include on the warning and put all that, and then have to come back on Thursday if petitions are submitted to vote to accept the petition.
I forgot about those petitions, yeah, yeah.
That's the reason we've traditionally moved it to Thursday, so that one time a year, so that we can do everything on the same if there's, if there are petitions out there.
Okay, um.
So we'll put together all that calendar and
I was gonna say, I don't think we need a, well, do we need a motion on that? I don't think we do. No one's not really opposed to that, right, okay. Okay, great, uh, alright, so that is the end of our regular business. So on to council reports, Donna.
Okay, well, I just want to brag Bill and staff, the link that you've put in your manager's report is to mine, thank you, thank you, I have been struggling to find everybody because particularly short of staff, some committees are having a hard time posting. So if any of the public haven't seen that, go to the manager's weekly report and there's this awesome link to all the meetings going on. It's terrific, I wanna thank Dan and the council for his appointment to the Public Safety Authority Board. I want to mention that the Park Commission did discuss, uh, the Gruen Park, perhaps finding a place for it. In fact, the new pump station that was part of what was opened this last week when they opened the extended bike path, it could be there, a place for parents particularly to sit and wait while their kids are having fun on the pump station, so at least they're discussing it and they're gonna come back to the city council with an option for us to consider. Uh, also, I wanna really, um, pleased to s- say that the rec department put in an application to renovate the bathrooms at the poolhouse. And I got the pleasure of signing a support letter that they wrote beautifully, so let's hope they get the money. Um, and the other thing is, I really do think that Steve, uh, Whitaker has a a point about us getting to the public bathrooms. We need to do something, and whether that's directing staff, committee, whatever, we need to move that forward, the the months are coming that are gonna be nastier than now. And it's sad watching people hunt for bathrooms. Thank you.
Hey, thank you, Connor.
Uh, not too much, um, I I think at some point I, you know, especially as Bill's saying that the ballot has to be ready in January, it might be worth a discussion if there are any potential charter changes that we need, um, to sort of adapt to the new, uh, pandemic economy, I I I felt in several cases, we were sort of waiting on the states, um, to make some big decisions here. And uh, just that maybe we could start putting a list together of things we think would be a comprehensive charter change uh, to give us a bit more control, I also like the idea, um, I think we said it a couple meetings ago, just acknowledging that the economy is not gonna be coming back to normal anytime soon, you know, if you look at Australia, they've closed the borders to twenty-three, I think, you know? Um, wh- what do, what should we be taking into consideration as we form the new budgets and you you know, h- how will that be different than what we've done in the past there, cause I think business as usual isn't gonna get the job done going forward, so I think having some of those discussions right now, rather than, um, you know, when we need to do it, um, would be helpful. So, that's it for me tonight, thanks.
Thank you, uh, Jay.
Yeah, I'm gonna take a pass at it or anything, thanks.
Alright, uh, Dan.
Thanks, um, but I will offer congratulations to John Holler, who led the, uh, Extended Bike Path Project and, uh, I I was unable to make it out to the to ribbon cutting, but, um, uh, to my great disappointment, but it, I have gone out there and it looks fantastic. Um, I'll echo some of Connor's concerns about, um, you know, where we go as a as a city this fall and this next year with continuing um, issues, COVID-related issues, shutdown-related issues, um. I think we have to keep close attention as the weather turns, and I was reminded this week, as the weather turned really cold, some of the benefits that we've been enjoying about out-to-outdoor activity, outdoor dining are going to start to go away. Um, and then as Donna mentioned, you know, that's when, uh, we go back inside, when outbreaks reemerge. But I think we have to be be thoughtful, and because I think as a community, we're gonna have to really prepare for another onslaught, so that I'll leave it there on a happy note.
Um, great, thanks, Jack.
Um, a couple of things, one, uh, also congratulation to Mamba, the Montpelier Area Mountain Bike Association, uh, rec, the Parks Department and everybody who was involved in putting together the, uh, mountain bike trail project, tremendous amount of fundraising and, uh, and physical labor went into it, it was, uh, it was great to be at the at the ribbon cutting, even though Alec could not quite get his, uh, son to operate the scissors and cut the ribbon, um, it was a good effort anyway, um. And I also wanna mention, for anyone who's, uh, who's watching, that there are, uh, arreage assistance programs available for, uh, for people who've had, uh, income losses due to the, uh, coronavirus, and I particularly wanna mention that the Public Service Department has an arreage, uh, forgiven assistance program, uh, funded out of COVID funds to enable people to get their electric bills paid if they're, uh, if they haven't been able to pay them, and that's uh, that's a fund that has been really not reached anywhere near the number of people who probably need it and who who could, uh, benefit from it, so publicservice.dormont.gov is where you would go, and then there's a bunch of stuff after that, but, uh, I encourage encourage anyone who's had trouble paying their electric bills to, uh, to contract the Public Service Department, they've made it, uh, quite easy to, uh, to submit the application and, uh, and qualify for funding, and if you've, if you've been managing now because there's been a a show-off moratorium in place, it's it's not gonna last forever and you're gonna need electricity in this, in the winter. And that's all I've got.
Thank you, Lauren.
Uh, yeah, just a couple of quick things, um, one, I wanted to mention that the, um, Social and Economic Justice Advisory Committee has been, um, holding a couple, uh, forums, trying to educate the public on this process we're undertaking and also doing some fundraising, so we can hopefully expand beyond what um, we have funded through council and the city budget, um, so there's an event, uh, this coming Saturday at four P M. Um, or you can watch a recording if you just wanna learn more about kind of an overview of what the city is undertaking and how you can help, so. I hope people will check that out, um, and we've been posting information and thanks to Cameron for doing a great job staffing that and helping, uh, keep that whole thing moving along, um. And, um, what this, I just wanted to, uh, throw out there for whoever's watching, um, curious what's happening with, uh, our wonderful Halloween, we normally do as a city, I know this is probably more of a Montpelier live, but I just know we have so many creative and, um, you know, interesting folks in the city that could probably think of some really good socially-distanced fun, and it's usually just such a great event and with the local businesses, um, in downtown, so um, was just kind of curious or hoping lots of good conversations are happening with, you know, what what that could look like this year, and and is there a component that could also be, how do we, you know, safely patronize local businesses and do do something to support our our downtown community, so just wanted to raise that as something I'm interested in exploring, um, and anyway, I can help, um. And the last thing, I talked to a couple business owners, especially heading into, you know, what might be some kind of tourist season with foliage, um, and one thing that's come up a few times are some um, business owners just bringing up like trash removal and especially during, you know, when we're having tourists come, wanting our city to be, you know, the welcoming, beautiful, um, thriving place that it is, um, and you're just really staying on top of that is, you know, one of the things that they're most concerned about. So I just wanted to raise that as well. Thanks, all.
Great, thank you, uh, so I also wanna add my congratulations to all those who worked on the North Branch Trails off of Coming Street. Uh, very exciting to have those open now, uh, but I also want to add, um, uh, my congratulations to the Cross Vermont Trail folks, because they also had an event this week, uh, they had a groundbreaking, they've raised enough money to, uh, start construction of a bridge across the Winuski uh, to, that that, this is like the biggest part, the biggest, uh, uh, chunk for them uh, in getting the the Cross Vermont Trail, uh, going. And so it was kind of like they were doing the heaviest lift first, and so it's now that this is underway, uh, it makes the the rest of the process, um, well, a lot, lot easier, which is great. So this bridge is, uh, sort of off, um, off of Galison Hill, more or less, uh, so um, very exciting for them to, and for us really, to be, uh, you know, embarking on this and be connected, uh, with a nice bike path, and to parts outside of Montpelier. And be connected uh with a nice bike path and to parts outside of Montpelier, so. Uh, so anyway, that's it from me, uh John. John Odom, are you there?
Gone to sleep. No, can you hear me? I haven't gone to sleep, my Zoom isn't coming up, it's very, you can you can hear me, though?
We hear you.
Oh, good, yeah, where did it go? Um, well, anyways, um. The ballots in the all male election um went out today and yesterday. If uh you registered to vote in this month. You probably won't see them going out until next Monday, but everybody's getting something. If you don't see them in, you know, a week. Week and a half, give me a call, if anybody's listening, and there are a number of reasons why you might not have received one, all of them very manageable. But um, so going into, with a brief break, another round of completely unknown territory. And incredibly busy elections, so the clerk's office is once again going to be all about elections, elections, elections. But we've got our Dropbox set it set up, including a nifty one in the back, and um. You know, I do need to remind people that for any kind of in-person voting, you're gonna have to sign a little thing that. You know, either bring in the ballot you sent or sign something that indicates you're not trying to vote twice. Not that you could do that in our system, but you know, we we expect you to sign the thing anyways. Um, and that in-person voting, then, you know, the office is only open Tuesdays and Thursdays, but. Yeah, so we've got a huge amount of volunteer needs, a huge amount, unprecedented, and I have never seen. People are like falling out of the woodworks to volunteer on this, it's extraordinary, I haven't even had to put the squeeze on people or. Send out the the annoying emails, and we're already almost all staffed up, not just on Election Day. But through, you know, the beginning of October all through, so um, still some out there, so you all still get hassled, but um. Yeah, it's a weird time, but kind of looking good.
John, I I know I can ask this tomorrow, but um but for the public, for you mentioned people are coming into the clerk's office to vote. Just so that I'm clear and the public's clear, that would mean bringing in the ballot they were mail to hand it in.
Well, I mean, we won't stop you from voting if you don't. If you don't have the ballot with you that you were sent, then you will be asked to sign a a a legal affidavit saying. I'm coming in without my ballot you sent me, I am going to destroy that ballot. And as I say, the system does not allow you to vote more than once. Um, if we punch in one ballot for somebody, they can't send in the other ballot, it will uh, it will not get counted. And in fact, they could get in a little trouble if someone's looking too closely, but if you don't have the ballot with you or you don't bring it. No, we will not stop you from voting in the office.
Okay, that's good to know.
Thank you. Uh, Bill, go ahead.
Uh, just a couple of things, um. For the twenty eighth meeting, we are going to be, we at least technically had scheduled to talk about our legislative priorities. Um, so I'm I'm thinking our legislative committee, we may want to pull together a session in advance of that, just to at least have a draft of something. For the council to talk about. Do you may recall what we said we would do was. The council would talk about some priorities and come up with a preliminary list, invite the legislators in, you know, in November. And then, you know, hear from them about what's doable, what isn't, their feedback on our list, and then adopt a formal. Sort of, here's our legislative agenda after that meeting. So anyway, just heads up, we'll have to get in touch, I don't think. So, and those of you on that committee be thinking about what what that list might look like, in fact, all the rest of you. Just to a couple of the comments that the council made, next meeting, we will be going over budget stuff. Um, and we will be, so we've set that aside, we'll be going over the first quarter finances of the current budget, because you probably made. Budget changes uh with the idea that we revisit those quarterly and see where they're at. At that, you know, I think when we did this, it was the actual, the idea that, gee, things will be getting better and. We'll be able to restore things, and I I'm not sure that's gonna be the case, at least for the first quarter. Uh, but then we'll also be talking about the process coming up and. The challenges we might be facing, so to Connor's point that we should be thinking about this, it, I don't think it will be business as usual. Um, so, we we're gonna have to have some hard conversations there. Um, I was trying to think, there was something else that somebody said, and I know, oh, public bathrooms that will also be on the next agenda. Uh, and Cameron is heading up um the Toilet Task Force, and they are, so. They've done a lot of things, but amongst them was to identify existing resources that potentially could be put back into action soon for the the winter, including. City Hall, well, you know, I haven't seen the full list, but even private ones and state, well, you know, I think there are some at state buildings. And since the state is technically supposed to be the lead agency on human services. Uh, we're hoping that maybe the very least, they could do is open up some of their bathrooms to the public. Um, to help with this issue, so um, but we'll know more about that with a a list of ideas. And then obviously s- some longer term thinking about where we might construct something. Um, so that's all I have.
Okay, well, that is the end of our, oh, there's, we have to make sure to swear in, Dan.
Do that, can you still hear me?
Yes.
Oh, good, cause I can't even pull up Zoom at all, so I'm just like talking to a magic screen, so I'm glad you're on mute for me. I can't hear you, so, so no face to face here, but it is legal to do this, I've checked um over the phone. So I assume over video conferences even better, so, Dan, I'm counting on you to raise your right hand here, cause I can't see you. Um, then there's two oaths, as you probably remember. Okay, do you solemnly swear or affirm that you will be true and faithful to the state of Vermont, and that you will not directly or indirectly do any act. Or thing injurious to the constitution or government thereof, so help you God, or under the pains and penalties of perjury?
I do.
Do you solemnly swear or affirm that you will faithfully execute the office of City Council Representative, the Central Vermont Public Safety Authority for the city of Montpelier? And will there do equal right and justice to all persons to the best of your judgment and ability according to law, so help you God, or under the pains and penalties of perjury?
I do.
All right, you are duly sworn.
Thank you, John, thank you, Dan.
Okay, I think that is the end of our our business, uh so. Yeah, so without uh objection, I will consider this meeting adjourned. Thank you, everybody.
Good night.